Notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on September 18, 2020, and has been posted on the municipal website, Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on May 6, 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year. And by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you call the roll?
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Kennebohm?
Mr. Valvanes?
Here.
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Mr. Stein? Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now we'll go through, we have four resolutions. The first one is Case Number Z 1818-619, 374 Cherry Hill Road, Block 3901, Lots 3 and 6. The findings, in fact, were in everybody's packet. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to read them over.
Steve, that's correct. But then we did circulate a version that had some very minor revisions, which I can go over if...
Yes, that would be good.
Okay. So what we did in the revised draft was make clear that the lot number is now 14. It's become a consolidated lot. We corrected the date of the roll call vote. And I think that's it. Those are the corrections we made.
Okay. All right. Would someone like to either comment or make a motion?
I move we accept it.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay. Claudia, can you call?
Who seconded the motion?
Nick Valvanes.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
One second. I've got to find my paper on the... I have so many papers on the next resolution here. So you'll have to bear with me one second. I don't have the one I need. Okay. Okay. The next one is six, well, is Case Number Z 2020-836, 16 Chambers Street, Lot 19.02, Lot 16, in the CB zone of the borough. We had a... There was a resolution in your packet. I believe, Karen, there were modifications to that.
There were, which I circulated. Again, I can go over them if we wish. And then we did add some additional language today by email, based on a conversation with the chairman and Derek and the applicant.
Okay. If you would, why don't you go over those, that, you know, latest conversation?
Okay. Assuming everybody had a chance to look at the initial revisions, we circulated what we proposed to add by email today was to add a paragraph 12. So it will come on page... Just see. It would be on page 5. And the paragraph 12 would read as follows. Chairman Cohen expressed concern that the proposed rear egress may not meet the building code standards for both egress and fire safety, and asked that review and approval by the construction official be a requirement of approval. Then, consistent with that, what we did with the first condition of approval, which appears on page... Page 7. And what we did was amend that, and it would now read, "The proposed rear egress must comply with all life safety standards and requirements of the 2018 International Building Code, New Jersey Edition, as confirmed by written approval of both the construction and fire officials."
Yeah.
And as I said, we did review that with the applicant and their attorney today, and they had no objection to that clarification.
Would any of the board members like to comment that? Comment on this? Or if not, would somebody make a motion?
Move to accept as revised.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
But, okay. The third resolution is Case Z 2020-858, five, sorry, oh, excuse me, 16 Harrison Street, Block 53.01, Lots 17 and 18. Are there any comments on the resolution? If not, if somebody'd like to make a motion?
Move to accept.
I'll second.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mayor Floyd?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Okay. Our last motion is File Number Z 2020-868, 86 Moore Street, Block 25.06, Lot 54. Comments, motions, whatever.
I move to accept.
I second it. Eve Coulson. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Coulson?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Our first application this evening is Case Number Z 1919-787, 166 to 168, John Street, Block 17.05, Lot 16, in the R4 zone. Now, I do want to let the, anybody in the audience know that we will, and as we do in all applications, we will have public comment. If you do want to participate, I believe, you know, Claudia, can you tell them what's a click?
Yeah, they just have to raise their hand. Right now, I just want to know, who are the professionals that we need to bring over?
Yes, so Claudia, we would need to bring in Matt Connors.
Connors, you said?
Yes, Matt Connors. John McDonough. And Mina, spelled M-E-N-A. She's one of the attendees.
And George.
And George Jacamar.
Hey. All right. So if you'd like to begin... Oh, wait, one thing. Karen, have all the notices?
They are. Noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Okay. Please begin.
Thank you, Karen.
Mr. Bridger will swear you in for the evening. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Karen, Mr. Chair, would you like all of our witnesses to be sworn in now, or should we do it as we go?
Well, why don't we wait till Mr. Bridger's finished with his memo? Then we'll swear everybody in then.
Okay.
Great. Mr. Degrassia, do we have everybody, or are we still missing?
Mina.
I don't know. Do I see George Jacamar?
No.
Our traffic guy.
There he is.
Oh, he's listed.
Anybody else?
Okay. No, I think we have everyone. Thank you.
Good evening. Application has been filed by 168 John Street LLC, seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for adaptive reuse of an existing building in the construction of a new building. Use variance relief pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70, D1 and 5 is requested to allow a structure not permitted in the zone and to exceed the maximum permitted density. There are numerous bulk variances required. The property is located in the R4 zone. The site contains 17,707 square feet. The current existing two-family structure is permitted as of right. The property is located on the west side of John Street, between Quarry and McLean Street. The surrounding land uses are a mix of 1, 2, and multifamily dwellings. There are several larger multifamily projects in the amenity. Medium vicinity to the south, the Waxwood with 32 units. To the east, Merwick, Stanworth with 236. And to the north, Hagman Homes with 50 units. And across the street to the west, McLean Street with 10 units. The existing two-story house will remain with a 750 square foot addition added to the rear. The new 3,700 square foot building will be constructed toward the rear of the property. The existing house will contain, in addition, three units, a two-bedroom unit on the lower level and a three-bedroom unit and a two-bedroom unit on the second and third floors. There's an existing front porch and two second-floor covered porches. The rear building will contain four units. The lower level will have a one-bedroom unit, which is an affordable housing unit, and a two-bedroom unit in the second and third floors will have two-bedroom units. Two, or second-floor balconies are proposed as well. Site improvements include a new seven-space parking lot, which includes a provision for four bank parking spaces, access to the lattice from John Street. The front building will have a paved walk to John Street and a deck at the rear of the building. And the rear building will have a paved patio and deck in the rear. Landscaping treatments aren't proposed around the perimeter of the property. There will be enclosed trash and a recycling storage area located on the lower level of the front building that will serve both buildings. The property is located in the R4 zone, requires a D1 use variance. Only one building is permitted on a lot in the former Princeton Borough, and the applicant is proposing two. It also has a use variance. The use variance on... Somewhat different in Princeton. It's based on the number of habitable rooms. And based on that habitable room count, there's 22,500 square-foot lot area required in existing 7,708 square feet. Both the D variances shall be granted only by the affirmative vote of at least five members. The applicant should address special reasons to justify granting of the relief requested as required by statute. The reasons why the strict application of the zoning, prohibition of the requested use or development would deprive the applicant of reasonable land, use of the land or the buildings involved, and evidence that the required relief may be granted without detriment to the public good or the impairment of the intent of the zoning plan, master plan, and zoning ordinance. The applicant should also describe how the plan relates to the master plan, the proposal's impact on the neighborhood, the community's needs, and set forth a legal argument for the proposal. There's numerous bulk variances. I'll go over those right now. There's a side yard variance requirement is 15 for the existing building. The proposed setback will be 9.51 feet to the addition. For the proposed building in the rear, the setback will be three feet to the balcony. The rear yard setback for the proposed building is 25 required and 16 feet to the deck. Maximum impervious coverage for the site is limited to 36%. The applicant is proposing 49.3%. The parking style size required is nine feet by 18 feet, and the applicant is proposing one nine-foot by 15 and one nine-foot by 16-foot spaces. There's a prohibition on parking within the front yard. The front yard setback is 15.7, and the proposed setback for the parking is eight feet. The driveway setback from the side yard is about five feet, and the proposed is three feet. And the maximum number of units in a structure is three units, and you're proposing four units in the new building to be constructed at the back of the lot. The parking aisle width requirement is 24 feet, and there's 22 is proposed. I would go over briefly some of the site plan concerns. It was reviewed by the landscape consultant, Dan Dobromylski, and he basically asked the applicant to consider some planting and fencing around the perimeter of the site and to add more trees to shade the parking lot. There's a lot of staff comments in here. I would just ask that if the application is approved, the applicant can identify which staff comments they don't want to agree with, and we can discuss it at that point. It is an historic district. It was reviewed by the HPC, and I believe Elizabeth Kim will be here tonight to touch upon some of the HPC's concerns with the application. And there's a couple other reports I just wanted to go over. Environmental Commission had reviewed the application, and they had asked that the... They would like to see if the 24-inch oak on the north side of the existing structure can be preserved by eliminating parking spaces in the immediate area of the tree. They've asked that the applicant provide a deep energy retrofit to the existing structure by adding insulation in the wall plus a layer of continuous insulation air sealing before adding new siding. Incorporate passive house design principles in the new structure. Add photobait, well, take panels on the southern-facing roof. Equip both buildings with an electrical vehicle charging station. And the new building should incorporate renewable energy-ready home specifications. The plan was also reviewed by the Site Plan Advisory Board, and they had numerous comments. I'll hit on some of those. SCRAB did endorse the site plans, providing one parking place per unit as reasonable. They suggested that the plan showing the bank parking space not be approved. The applicant should shift the new structure in the rear to provide a five-foot setback to the stairs and deck on the north side. Variance where a five-foot setback is approved or recommended, excuse me, rather than a three-foot setback. They added some stylistic comments about the Dutch Gambrel roofed house. SCRAB questions the use of the aluminum panels on the addition and the new structure that intentionally contrasts with restored existing building. The can... They asked that the redesign of the trash receptacle bike storage be considered so that the addition align with the louver doors with the wall of the building so that the open doors do not encroach on the patio, walkway, and parking. They request a bike rack be located outside the structure in the rear of the lot in addition to the expanded area in the existing structure. And they requested that the applicant attempt to preserve the pine tree in the backyard of the existing structure located west of the deck of the proposed addition. They request that either the deck or a 42-inch, the deck rail or a 42-inch high ornamental fence should extend along the top of the retaining wall between the upper lawn and the parking area. And they also requested that one electrical vehicle charging station should be provided in the parking area. They suggested a couple minor items, like a concrete stoop being added to the back door for the three-bedroom unit on the south side of the original building. And that's basically their comments. I don't know if Elizabeth is here. Let me see.
I am.
Great. I will hand it over to you now.
Thank you.
On the HPC's review. Thank you.
Elizabeth, we'll just swear you in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So the HPC held a hearing on this application at their meeting on July 20. The subject property falls within the Wetherspoons Jackson Storied District. HPC had no objections of the proposed building to accommodate the four dwelling units, unlike the reflective relationship between the two buildings. It was a consensus of HPC that the applicant should be commended for preserving the existing two-family dwelling on the property and not demolishing it. The existing two-and-a-half-story two-family dwelling is a Dutch colonial revival style built in the early 1900s. However, HPC was opposed to the proposed alterations in addition to the existing historic structure and expressed concerns relating to the sitting of the new building and parking. Comments were made that saving the storied building is not an automatic reason to improve an application. Although there is great support for affordable housing opportunity, inclusion of one affordable housing unit in this application requires another variance at the expense of compromising the quality of the storied district by increasing building mass, parking demand, and reducing open space. Further comments provided suggested the applicant could have engaged in a concept review with HPC and presented the project at the Wetherspoons Jackson Neighborhood Meetings to receive feedback early in the design process. So HPC was unanimous in not supporting this application. And the following reasons were identified and discussed by HPC, which I'd like to go through. Number one, the cultured stone. The applicant proposed adding cultured stones to the lower and first floor elevation of both the existing two-family dwelling and will propose new building. HPC felt strongly that this element of exterior treatment to both buildings was inappropriate for construction within the storied district. Although there are Dutch colonial buildings in presence and with some stone treatment, none are found within this storied district and is out of character for this neighborhood. Architectural details on the existing front post will be lost with the cultured stone treatment. The coloring and appearance of the stone proposed by the applicant is intrusive and destroys historic nature and appearance of the existing two-family dwelling. The existing stucco is an appropriate material that should be maintained for the existing Dutch colonial revival-style house. Number two, existing two-family dwelling rear addition. HPC felt that this feature likewise damaged the character integrity of the existing two-family dwelling. The addition's angled roof line and its intersection to the defining feature of the existing gamble roof is intrusive. The aluminum clouding, large windows, and cable rail for the proposed rear addition to existing two-family dwelling negatively impacts the appearance of this Dutch colonial feature. The lower-level rear unit should better relate to the open space and shade in the rear yard as well. Number three, the rear yard grating should be modified in an effort to save one of the 18-inch pine trees. Number four, the hardy plank sliding should be smooth, not textured finish. Number five, the blue color selected by the applicant for the new proposed building in the rear is inappropriate. The existing two-family dwelling structure is currently a light earth tone in color, similar to several other buildings in the John Street neighborhood wherein the property is located. Any exterior treatment of this existing two-family structure and the new proposed building should have similar earth tones. Number six, a new building should relate better to the streetscape. Number seven, HPC was opposed to, in addition to the existing house, if redesigned... Excuse me, was not opposed to, in addition to the existing house, if redesigned with a more sensitive approach. An alternate suggestion was made that the second-story addition to the rear of the existing two-family dwelling could be eliminated if the new proposed building in the rear of the property was turned around approximately 90 degrees and enlarged somewhat to accommodate additional residential unit. If the applicant was to redesign the project, HPC would welcome the applicant to return to them for a concept review before proceeding again to your board. Number eight, the seven-car parking lot extremely visible from John Street. An effort should be made to encourage the applicant to redistribute some of the parking spaces to other places on the property. And number nine, if the board grants approval for this application, it is recommended that final details of the building and site until be returned to HPC for their review. As always, HPC appreciates the opportunity to review this application and provide their comments, and I'm available to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
That's it with staff reports. Derek?
Steve, you're muted.
I'm sorry about that. Yes, do we want to go through the individual memos from Dan Dobromylski from the Environmental Commission? Again, HPC, to get the concurrence or objection to or discussion on any of the points on these memos?
It did hit some of the main spots, but you're welcome to go over. If you'd like to drill down, that's fine.
Have you, Mr. Degrassia, have you gone through these memos?
Yes.
We could, we have a very detailed presentation from our architect. And as we go through the presentation, we can address all of the points in all of the memos.
Okay. Fair enough.
Steve?
Yes.
I have a couple questions of Derek. Number one, you know, you would read the, some of the comments by SCRAB. In particular, they have, they endorsed the one parking space. What is their role? Did I... Their advisory?
Their advisory, yep.
And is that something normal that they comment on?
I think all the boards in Princeton have pretty free rein on what they comment on.
Yeah, okay. And that ends up with a lot of different opinions. Okay. And the second thing, could you go over just how this banking of parking works, both in our approval process? You know, that's something that they say, you know, don't approve that. But we don't usually see banking, so I'm not really that familiar with.
Well, you often see it on larger-scale projects where people are trying to save impervious coverage and reduce the paved area of the site. So I would ask that you listen to the applicant and their experts, and then make a decision. I mean, it really comes down to what's adequate for the number of units on site. The requirement's 11 spaces. They're providing seven, and that this, four banked. The idea is if they need them in the future, they're banked and they could use them, and they could convert it to parking in the future. But at this point, and I don't want to make testimony for the applicant, but I think their idea is to, you know, save impervious coverage. But I think you guys have to listen to the testimony and see if the number of parking spaces is, works that they're proposing.
Who determines if they're needed in the future? The municipality or the owner?
Both. I mean, if we have parking issues, people call about parking issues, we could call the applicant and say, hey, you know, we have an issue, and let's discuss opening up one of those bank spaces or more, you know?
Okay.
So Derek, so the banked parking is not figured in the impervious coverage calculation?
You know, I'm not sure. Matt Connors, I'm going to ask you to chime in.
But we haven't sworn in anybody yet, so...
Okay, well, maybe we can address that in the presentations.
I guarantee you, any of these questions will go through with very specific exhibits, so you'll have a complete understanding of what's proposed, what's being banked, and all the numbers.
Sure, okay.
You have a lot of details.
Great.
And I guess the last thing I noticed... And I guess the last thing I noticed, and I'm not sure if you mentioned it, Derek, that Scrab recommended that the new building be shifted, so there's a five-yard setback?
A five-foot setback, yes.
Five-foot setback, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so the balcony, that gets you to the second floor.
Yes.
Are the stairs and balcony, excuse me.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that. Thanks.
I did mention that out there, but thank you for bringing it up.
Yep.
Okay, Karen, do you want to swear in the other witness?
All right. So, Mr. Degrassi, my understanding is the professionals we're swearing in now are John McDonough, Matt Connors, George Jacmar, and Joshua Zinder, is that right?
That is correct.
All right. A gentleman, if you would all raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
I do.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
And the owners are also here. Mina and Anup, you can see them visually, we can have them sworn in as well if you'd like.
And could you just spell the last name for me, please?
Last name is Dam, D-A-M.
D-A-M, all right. Mr. and Mrs. Dam, if you raise your right hand, you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Should I get started, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Christopher Degrassia from the law firm of Figury, Drinker, Biddle, and Reath, here on behalf of the applicant, 166, 168 John Street LLC, which is essentially a husband and wife that own the property and would like to develop it. The application takes place in the R4 zone, as Derek has indicated, within the Witherspoon-Jackson historic district, and there is an existing two-story duplex there. What hasn't come out is that this is really a unique property, and you'll see it in the pictures and in the maps. At one time, it was owned by a water company, and in the backyard, there was actually a water tower. So, this is a very, very large lot. If you take that particular lot and divide it or subdivide it, the two new lots that you create, each of them will be one of the largest in the neighborhood. So, even if you divided it in half, you were still looking at a very, very, very large lot. And that's why when this was initially looked at, oh gosh, this goes back over a year now, the first idea was to take the property, subdivide it, and build two multifamily homes on it. Because it's in, as I said, the Witherspoon-Jackson district, our architect, Josh Zinder, who we'll talk very soon, arranged a meeting with the chair of the Historic Preservation Committee and the officer, Elizabeth Kim, to go through the property and argue that we should be allowed to demo the site. The units were, at least one of them was in very, very bad condition, like very bad, like not livable. And our plan was to demo it and go through with a new proposal. As a result of that meeting, they expressed a desire for us to save the house. So, they said, listen, you know, this is something, this is the only Dutch colonial in the neighborhood, and we would really like to have you guys take a look at it. So, we went back to the drawing board, and the project that you are about to receive really responds to the initial comments and recommendation from Historic Preservation, which was to preserve this unique structure, which is the only Dutch colonial in the neighborhood. And we've identified a number of variances, and we'll have our planner go through, but as you look at the variances, many of them will stem for two reasons. One is because we have a site that's already partially developed, and as we preserve the structure, there are certain constraints. So, you know, we're not going to meet an existing setback if we're going to build on that structure because it's already in that setback. And then the other is, when we got down to it, we thought it would be nice, actually not we, but my client, thought it would be nice to have an affordable housing unit. It's not required, but they thought that it would be a nice thing to have an affordable housing unit there, and because the lot was so large, adding a fourth unit to the back, we thought was a very nice thing for the community. Unfortunately, that triggers a number of little variances, but we don't really think there's any negative impacts from those. And that was something that you saw raised in the historic report, but we'll get into that detail later. So, basically, the plan you're going to see is really an adaptive reuse, where we're taking that front building and we're making a very modest change to the rear, so it's not even very visible from the street. And when I say modest, I mean, the only addition is 756 square feet, 756 square-foot addition, sensitively located in the rear. And then another structure in the back of the property, and guess where it is? Where the water tower was, because in that space, there was nothing around the water tower, there's no structures, it's very far from everything else. And that's our basic design. So, with that being said, I'd like to first introduce the owners of the property so that they could say hi to the board and tell them a little about themselves. You're already sworn in. So, Mina, are you there? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Can you just introduce yourself to the board, please?
Yes, and I have just a few lines to tell them. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time. My name is Mina, and right next to me is my husband, Anup. So, in 1989, we moved from Illinois to New Jersey and lived very close to Princeton until 2013. When we moved to Pennsylvania, our children continued to live in the same house until 2016. Princeton became our home over this 28-year-long period. We, as a family, spent a significant amount of time at the Westminster Choir College as students, parents, and volunteers, and the same for American Boy Choir School. Our doctors, dentists, pediatrician, and bank all were on Harrison Street, and we never missed getting bagels every Saturday morning at the Harrison Shopping Center. I also ran a weekly free language class every Sunday at the basement of the Talbot Library of the Choir College. We consider Princeton our home, and this is where we want to live, including our retirement years. This property will allow us to reach our goal of living in Princeton. We also expect our children and my mother to live in some of the apartments. We're looking at this property as a generational legacy, allowing our family to continue to live in Princeton for generations and become your neighbors and strong community members. This project also offers opportunities for other families to live in this historic neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mina. I don't know if we have any questions, but if not, I would like to turn it over to our architect to start the presentation. So, Josh, we have you sworn in, but I don't think we have you qualified. I know you appeared many times before this board. Would you like us to go through, he's licensed in New Jersey, architect, Josh, you want to go through your...
I don't think it's necessary. He's testified before the board, and I think we would accept him.
And Josh, your license is still current, I assume?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, everyone. We hope everyone is staying safe and healthy in these trying times, and thank you for making these accommodations to hear our application. Here you see the existing Dutch colonial revival structure on John Street with the existing two apartments. The property, the largest property in the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood that is occupied by a single structure, with the exception of the Waxwood. The focus of this project was to maximize the utility of the property, contribute to the well-being of the neighborhood, provide seven new apartments for the neighborhood, including one affordable, maximize open space of the property, and retain the historic contextual character of the vernacular neighborhood. This map you are all familiar with, is a Towns Witherspoon Historic District map. We have highlighted the project site on the plan. It is the snaggletooth that projects into the Merwick-Stanworth property. Here you see a Sanborn map from 1918. This is the first time the house appears on the map. You can also see the water tower in the back of the property. The house was occupied by the manager of the water tower and his family back then. Here's what the water tower looked like, quite interesting architecturally, actually. It would have been nice to have still had it to work with. When you look at the aerial snapshots, we can see the water tower in the 1997 shots, but by 2002, it had been removed. You can also see here the development of the adjacent site, the Merwick-Stanworth apartments. The site is walking distance to the entire town and university, which will make the apartments in this location quite desirable. Here's the site highlighted again. We have added Merwick and Stanworth to the neighborhood map due to our proximity, and you can see the uses in the neighborhood illustrated. As you can see, there are numerous two-family and multifamily developments in the neighborhood illustrated here in pink. As we're all aware, the zoning for the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood is not scaled appropriately, and as a result, most of the properties are existing non-conforming regarding multiple sections of the zoning. In this case, we have illustrated all the properties, both multifamily and single-family, that exceed the density requirements for the R4 zone. So, anything that's colored there exceeds the R4 zone. On this slide, we illustrate the properties that exceed the maximum impervious coverage for the R4 zone. Again, it's a majority of the properties. Here's some photographs of the property from John Street, where you can see the Dutch colonial revival structure as it is now. The site from above, please note that the property exists between the physical density of the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood and the larger, more open Merwick-Stanworth We began this looking, excuse me, we began this project looking for an as-of-right solution, which would allow the owners to create two structures and maximize the utility of the property. We can achieve two vernacular structures on a subdivided lot, which would accommodate six apartments, a shared drive, and parking in the rear. Both buildings fit within the setbacks that are compliant with open space, that are compliant with parking. In fact, there is one additional parking spot. Compliant with impervious coverage as well. We had two historic vernacular-looking structures that were compliant. At this point, we began a different approach. Keep the existing structure as a priority. Here's the existing site. We met with Elizabeth Kim and Julie Cabazoli of HPC. They pointed out the fact that the two-family structure was considered contributing to the historic district, and the Dutch colonial revival was the only one within the neighborhood that actually faces in this orientation. There are a few that are 90 degrees to this orientation, but this one is the only one in the district that faces this orientation. And the HPC would fight against its demolition. So, we took a different tack, and we moved to retain the historic structure, still maximizing the utility of the site. This is the site as we have developed it. We have a small addition off the back of the existing structure and a new dwelling structure in the back of the property, with a parking court to the north and an open yard to the south. The MLUL and most municipalities have density calculations that are calculated based on units per acre. This project accounts for a density of 17 units per acre as a point of reference, well, 17 units per acre as we have designed it. As a point of reference, my single-family home on Moore Street is four units per acre. Avalon Bay is 50 units per acre. The Waxwood around the corner is 24 units per acre. And the homes across the street on John Street, 173 to 175 John Street, is 17 units per acre as we are proposing for this property, and 171 John Street is also 17 units per acre as we are proposing for this property. We actually fit into the neighborhood perfectly with regard to density. This is a list of variances we are proposing. It does seem like there are many, but as we will show you, and as we will address all these variances, do you have the ability, excuse me, but as we will show, we will address all these variances and do have the ability to eliminate some of them, although they might not be in the best neighborhood or community theme if we do eliminate them. Specifically, these four variances can be eliminated if we eliminate the affordable unit. This is not our request or desire, however, they are not needed if we do not have the seventh unit, which is the affordable unit. Again, please note that all the remaining variances would not be required if we did not retain the existing house. So, we wouldn't need any of these variances if we didn't have to keep the existing house. And the one small variance, the rear yard setback variance, we can eliminate that if we change the deck to a patio. We just felt that having different levels in the back was a nice feature. This is the density as the town calculates density for this zone. It's a unique calculation, as far as we can tell. No other municipality calculates density in this way. As we mentioned earlier, the MLUL and most municipalities have a density calculation that are based on units per acre, which we previously noted. In Princeton, it is based on the number of habitable rooms per acre. So, providing spatial definition between rooms, we drive up the density, even though we do not drive up the occupancy or the habitation. As we have illustrated before, most of the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood is not compliant with this definition of density. In the existing house, the municipality counted the open concept kitchen-living dining rooms without doors between them as separate habitable rooms, increasing the density of the lot. We were calculating these, as shown in this drawing, as one habitable living space. We are proposing to open up the walls between these rooms as such as much as possible while also maintaining the structural integrity of the existing structure we were asked to preserve and still allow for the affordable unit. If we do eliminate the affordable unit, we can bring the plan within 200 feet of compliance, something that most of the structures in the neighborhood do not accomplish or do. Here we see the site plan with the required setbacks illustrated in red. We did have the option to overlap the two structures and slide the new structure behind the existing structure, but that happens nowhere in the neighborhood, and we felt it would appear odd. The rear structure needs to maintain a presence along the streetscape, even though it is set back quite a ways. Here we look at the streetscape of John Street. The buildings on both sides of the street are tightly packed and physically dense. Please note the site is centered above, it's right here. And we have the image of Merwick-Stanworth behind, where you can see the shadowed-in All the pink-hatch properties are existing non-conforming with regard to their setbacks, both east and west sides of John Street. Looking across John Street, you can see the relative density. Five-to-seven-foot spacing between homes is not uncommon. The water tower property has a different scale and spacing, much more, it's almost from a different part of Princeton, honestly. When we look at the west side of John Street and the properties that are its neighbors, we see that to the south, the closest structure is 37 feet 11 inches, because of the strip property that the university owns between the two neighbors. To the north, the existing structure sits 81 feet 2 inches from its neighbor and 43 feet 10 inches from that property line. The new structure in the rear sits 47 feet 9 inches from the nearest structure, which happened... from the nearest structure, which happens to be at the Merwick Stanworth property. If we enlarge the west side of John Street a bit, you can see the relationship between the structures with Merwick and Stanworth behind and 30 McLean dotted in on the side, which is across the street. Here you see the setbacks along John Street highlighted and where the structures sit within. And I have to make one clarification. We, we provided a copy of this presentation to the municipality. I guess it was last Friday, and there was one slide that was missed. We have labeled that slide, which is this next slide, 34A. So 34A is addition to what we previously had submitted. It's just a closer view of the elevation of the building. But I just wanted to point that out and clarify that as we go through. If some of you are tracking the page numbers, this will have no effect on the overall page numbers as we've made it a 34A. Now we zoom into our site. To one side, there is an access drive for the Merwick Stanworth property, and on the other side is 180 John Street. The John Street, 180 John Street structure sits on the northern side of the property. Please note that this elevation is a section cut through the street and illustrates the relative heights of the structures, but as the drive at our entry slopes down, you do not see the lower level of the rear structure. So that's right here. This is cut through John Street, and our driveway is actually below that level, which you see here. Sorry. Here you see the east elevation of the structure colored and the sectional quality of the parking lot, the rear structure taking on, on a Witherspoon Jackson vernacular form with a porch veranda on the east side. Michael had questioned before what Sprab had requested. So here you see the east elevation of the structure again, this time shifted. Sprab requested that we shift the new building over to maintain a five-foot side yard setback. We are prepared to do this, however, the relative positions of the structures, it feels like they overlap now, and to this point, we would ask the zoning board to weigh in on whether or not what we originally had set where the buildings did not actually overlap each other and the additional setback is, is a preference or is preferred. Now they overlap. Buildings in the neighborhood don't typically do that. Here you see the north elevation, which we'll be coming back to again later. The west elevation, this elevation has been revised to correctly depict the deck and patio shown in the plan as requested by Sprab. You'll also notice that the lower level here with the metal panels that Sprab talked about will be addressing the more modern addition to the existing structure a little bit later on in the presentation. Here you see the south elevation. The materials we are using on the structures, we feel, will fit well with the historic district and provide character and interest in the community landscape. Architectural shingles, fiber cement siding for longevity. We have changed this particular siding to a smooth style at the request of HPC. Cultured stone we selected specifically to try and match the ledge stone that would have been taken out of Corey Street. And I guess in retrospect, we, maybe we should have called it just stone, and I'm not sure anybody would have known that this was manufactured stone or non-manufactured stone, but it happens to be cultured stone. It is what allowed us to match that ledge stone that we see throughout the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood, which we'll also come back to. Downlights over most of the entries and some sconces where there's no overhead. The, there's a serif font for the building numbers, which should be mounted on the doors. We will be removing the concrete block railings that are on this Dutch colonial and in favor of a traditional wood rail, which can be found throughout the neighborhood at many, many, many properties, and it will be white and will have simple pickets. Our driveway will be two porous paving solutions to help with stormwater, and we hope, hope to use this tan mix, although if the board prefers a different color, we can entertain that as well. The pavers will be a sable blend to coordinate with the retaining walls. Our site lighting is simple wall sconces, which we intend to paint the color of the surface in which they sit. The fence around the property will be a simple black aluminum system. Sprab had recommended that we keep the existing fence that runs around the property. This is completely unacceptable. It has barbed wire on it. It is overgrown with a myriad of invasive species and dead plant materials, and the new fence will be open. You see it here in the bottom corner here. It will be open and community-friendly as opposed to the barbed wire, which currently wraps around the property and was a result of having the water tower on, on the property. They didn't want people to, to get up to the water tower. Looking at the site plan, the site is compliant for open space for the seven apartments and two structures. The aerial view from the south puts the two new structures into the scale of the surrounding neighborhood, neighborhood and the Merwick Stanworth property. The project was organized around two courts, a parking court and a green court, and that green court is larger than most properties in this neighborhood. The aerial view from the north and the two-court solution for the site from the north as well. In the parking court, we have allowed for one car per unit, which seems to be a common count in town these days. It was mentioned in the HPC report that they prefer the parking to be put somewhere else. I'm not sure where exactly we should be putting it. We did speak to the university about utilizing their drive for our entry and moving the parking to the back of our property and, and moving the new structure to face the street. The university did not grant the right-of-way, therefore, the only access we had was to maintain the existing curb cut to allow for proper visual in and out of the property. If we don't do the affordable unit and we only do the original six units planned, we can get all the parking on the site. That would mean that we require nine parking spaces. We do lose our little entry court. We go back there. So we have a little entry area that goes into the lower-level unit. We lose that, but we can accommodate all, all nine spot, parking spots. But we believe including the affordable unit and having fewer cars is a better solution. Now, we do recognize that parking can be a challenge, and in this neighborhood especially. Today's counts might not be reflected of the future. So that, to that end, we are proposing a banking for additional parking spots for the future development if needed, so that if, if the owner feels that there's not enough parking, if the town feels that too many people are parking on the street, then the parking lot can be expanded to get up to the required 11 spots. Now, as a result of this bark, excuse me, banked parking solution, one of the spots ends up sitting in the front yard setback, and one of the spots ends up being a shallow space, spot. So to the parkings, to, by doing the bank parking, we actually need additional variances, and even though the goal is to reduce the parking. And it was to that end that I believe Sprab recommended that we drop the bank parking altogether and rather just accept the variance for the seven spots. Our parking consultant, George Jacomar, is going to talk about the parking of seven parking spots. Chris? You're muted, Chris. Chris, you're muted. Chris, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I was just gonna say, George has appeared before Princeton boards many times. He can go over his qualifications if you like.
Well, I know he has appeared before, so I think unless someone else has a question, I would accept his qualifications.
Mr. Degretz, before you continue with Mr. Jacomar, these slides you just presented, are these collectively Exhibit A1?
Yes, A1, and then we identify them by the page.
Okay.
So George, we have page 52 up there, which shows the proposed parking plan, and if you can give us a little bit of testimony on why you feel this is sufficient for the site.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Jacomar, principal with the firm of Buckhurst Fish, Jacomar, BFJ Planning. And I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as a professional planner. We submitted a traffic, parking and traffic study regarding this application, and we analyzed to, to analyze the parking demand here. We looked at the American Community Survey, the basic census information that we have for this particular census tract, census tract number 40. And it mentions, for instance, that for people that live in the census tract that commute to work, 48% drive to work in single occupancy vehicles, 2% carpool. 49% of the people that live in this census tract, they either walk or bicycle or use public transportation to commute to work. Another statistic that we looked at is the number of cars that are available in each household in this district. And if you apply those percentages, the percentages of homes with zero cars, percentage of homes with one car, two cars, three cars, you apply that to the seven units that are proposed here. The parking demand comes out to be between six and seven cars. 6.5 is the actual calculation, you know, which is basically legally would be seven cars. So it does reflect, you know, the fact that in this neighborhood there are quite a number of residents and tenants that do not own a car or have only one car. Some have two cars, and, but overall, the percentage here for seven units would come to sex, between six and seven cars. I also should add that this site is less than a quarter mile from the Princeton Central Business District. And in this Princeton Central Business District, the parking requirement is 0.75 spaces per unit. If you were to use that ratio and apply it to this seven units, it would be a requirement of six spaces. So we feel that, you know, seven spaces is an appropriate number for this kind of development, given the socio-demographic data that we have for the census tract. That's basically, we also address traffic, you know, traffic impacts are very minimal, again, largely because, you know, a large percentage of people living in the neighborhood, they commute by, on foot or bicycle. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, George. I'll keep moving if it's okay, so we can get through tonight.
Actually. I have one question.
Steve, I have a question too.
Okay, go ahead, Michael. You go first.
Yeah, first, regarding parking, what area does Census 40 cover? How big is that?
Yes, it covers the area all the way from Bayard Lane on the west to Snowden Lane on the east. Snowden Lane is several blocks east of Harrison and from Nassau to a line that's in the north between Clay and Franklin and Lee Avenue. So the, the line is between Lee Avenue and Clay. So Clay would be in that district. Franklin would be in that district. Lee would be just outside of the district.
And I guess in my mind, one of the things with this neighborhood, it has a large immigrant population that have no cars, and it is highly unlikely that any of that population will live in these units, but yet it skews your numbers. And that's just a statement. You don't even have to answer.
Talking to you.
Yeah, I was actually, Michael, you finished?
Yes.
Okay, basically, I was just gonna say the nature of the, of this area of town is changing. So relying on the previous census data for parking counts may not totally reflect what's happening. You know, more and more units are getting developed, and, and the cost of those units unfortunately is, is in excess of what people are paying now and are moving out of the area. And given the, given the, the rental rates, I would suggest that, that more people in this community will start to have cars. So I'm, I'm very concerned about the, the seven cars.
So I, I think that a lot of data currently shows that people are using cars less, more, but to that effect, to your concern and to Jesse Michael's concern, that's why we put forward the bank parking as a solution, where if it does end up being an issue, we can add more parking spots. And that's, that was the reason why we put it forward.
Okay, well, two questions. In this layout, are any of these handicap spaces or van-accessible spaces?
So you do not need handicap spaces unless you have 10 parking spots. So when we get to, if I go back a slide here, in this case, in the case of the bank parking, we would have at least one, possibly two handicap spots in that position.
Are any, just to drop back here for a moment, are any of the units in here, the single-story units, going to be ADA compliant?
So, so there will be three units that are ADA compliant, yes.
Okay, so.
There's also the possibility of adding an elevator to one of the units, but that's, that would be for the towns themselves, and they haven't decided.
Okay, so the ADA compliant units would have an accessible path of travel from the parking to the unit?
Yes.
Okay, so that may require ramps.
Um, not based on our current grading, no.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I should add, you know, the census date, data that I quoted, a date from 2017. The other, you know, point in, in regards to your comment is that we also see more people going carless because, you know, it has become easier to use the Ubers and Lifts and so on. So there's, there's another trend happening that, you know, where the car ownership has, you know, I, I can't say it's reduced, decreasing, but it's, it's not increasing as much as we see, think then.
One question, I don't know if you're gonna handle this in another part of your presentation, but the banked parking is included or not included in the impervious coverage?
Well, that's what I'm about to talk about.
I'm sorry?
That's exactly what.
It's in there now. We're gonna talk about it next.
We're gonna talk about it right now, impervious coverage. Okay, so here we have the impervious coverage as we're required to calculate it. And as a result of this, we need a variance. Stormwater management is very important to this project. To that end, we have proposed using porous pavement for the parking lot. If this material was counted in the calculation, we would be compliant with a 40% reduction in impervious services, because the lot is now subdivided, impervious allowance is 36%. If the lot was subdivided, each side would have an impervious coverage of 49.5%, similar to the majority of the properties in the neighborhood. As Sprab's recommendation, we are also detailing the pavers in the center here to be permeable to allow stormwater to enter the ground of that location as well. We did consider raid gardens as stormwater solution, but this was not possible due to the site topography, and the porous pavement was a more sustainable approach. For the, for the banked parking solution, if we maintain the porous pavement, it would still be compliant. But as the site is now, if we don't use the porous pavement, it's not compliant. And the way Princeton is, and maybe Derek can explain this a bit, porous pavement is actually not considered a impervious, impervious coverage acceptable solution, even though it does actually create porous surfaces. But we can have that discussion, I guess, another, another time.
Okay.
Here you actually see the, the porous pavement, and I have a video, but I'm not gonna show it to you tonight. Just, if you wanna see it, give me a call and I'll show you the video. Just if you want to see it, give me a call and I'll show you the video. The material actually allows a hundred percent of the water that touches it to filter through it. So they're quite nice. The structures will be designed to lead for home standards, although certification is not for sure yet. The consulting costs for this may be prohibitive, the certification. We are incorporating a white roof on the addition to reduce heat-out effect and some smaller green roofs, covered bike storage, and as mentioned, the porous pavement, which is made from recycled truck tires. We are looking to fit, we are looking into solar for the flat roof and the southern facing roofs, but at this point cannot commit to it due to the cost. We hope there will be applicable rebates and or help from the state for this when the time to construct starts.
Okay.
There were some questions about the shading of the parking court. So we have done a shade study illustrating that there is shade on the lot even during the summer solstice. And it is almost completely shaded during the winter solstice, so I'll just take you through that. You might also note that we have a four to five-foot hedge along the north side of the site of the property, providing screening, visual screening of the parking lot itself.
That's a very, but you're also asking for a side yard setback for the parking, is that correct? For the paved area?
It's the paved area. It's so that we can get twenty-two feet so that you can get in and out of the parking, in and out. I believe we have a three-foot buffer. And I believe we're required to have that four-foot buffer along that edge. But we are going to have the shrubs along that four to five-foot-high hedge along that wall.
That's a pretty narrow strip and the parking aisle and the spaces are very small.
The spaces are, these spaces are standard sizes. They're not small sizes. If you only if you only approved the seven spots, if you said that's all you wanted to approve, we would eliminate the parking space and the setback and we'd eliminate the smallest parking spot. The small parking spot is a result of the bank spacing.
Say fifteen and sixteen feet deep?
No, they're, these are the full, the full width parking. And actually, since we're about to talk about site work here, Steve, let's, let me introduce Matt Connors, our civil engineer from E L N P.
I don't want to, I don't want to mess your presentation up. Are you ready? Is that what you want to do next?
Yep, as we're flowing right into it. We're trying to answer your questions before you ask.
Great.
So Matt, I think, I believe you've been, have you testified? I know you've been before the zoning. Yes, you have.
I've been before all of the boards in Princeton on many occasions, yes.
Do you want him to go through his qualifications?
Just briefly, because I'm not familiar with him.
Okay.
Sure. My name is Matthew Connors. I work for a company called E N L P, Engineering and Land Planning. I'm an associate at the firm. I have been licensed in the state of New Jersey as well as four other states. I have presented similar testimony to this board and your other boards within town on several occasions in the past year and two years, as well as before then. But that's the most recent.
Okay, no, that's fine. That's fine. I just wasn't familiar with your credentials, but we would accept you as an expert.
Thank you.
So I'm going to take you through the existing conditions on the site. I'll walk you through the site plan, grading, drainage, and then finally landscaping. And we'll explain what we're doing on the site as we go and try to address comments that Derek provided, as well as HPC as I go through this. This is the impervious cover calculation. You can see that the existing site has twenty-one point four-three percent impervious. So we broke this table down to kind of give you an idea where the square footage is going. So the stuff associated with building is about eight point three-nine percent. And the existing materials associated with drives and walks and things of that nature is about thirteen point oh-four percent. In the proposed scenario, we have a twenty-four point oh-seven percent impervious associated with the building materials. And then we have a twenty-five point two-six percent impervious that's associated with the asphalt drives and the sidewalks and the materials. In that number is the pervious pavement of about three thousand five hundred and fifty-four square feet that Josh earlier stated, even though it's pervious, it's not considered pervious in the calculation. So that totals to forty-nine point three-three percent. And again, based on what Josh said, if you were to look at the comparables in the area, we are approximate to what they are. I believe the number was forty-nine point five. We're basically in that ballpark. So this is the existing site. You can see the existing building and it has two concrete walks going up to it. To the north of that is the existing paved drive, and that actually goes downgrade. It's kind of a little odd when you see it, but it's going down to the basement level. And then it comes back up into the backyard area. So the lowest point on the site is actually in that driveway area. And there is an inlet in that. It's currently filled and we believe it goes to the road. To the south or planned south, we have an existing paved drive, and that is not part of the property. That is the associated with the rear parcel. It's for access. We're not allowed to use that by deed or conveyance in any way. The existing perimeter is a combination of chain link fence and volunteer hedge growth. In the front, we have some existing hedge that lines John Street. And then we also have two fairly large mature oaks that are within the John Street area. On the property, we have two mature oaks that are to plan north. And then there is the eighteen-inch pine that is being, has been referred to before. That's kind of how the site lays out. If anybody has any questions on that, I'll proceed to the next. Okay, so this is an aerial and what we're trying to do is show you tree cover here as well as where the green spaces are and where the paved surfaces are. So the the pinkish-brown structure, that's the existing structure. The large mature oaks along John Street, you can see those as well as the onsite trees. And you can see the perimeter hedge around the northwest and south sides. You can't see the fence because the edge actually has taken it over. You can see the twenty-foot-wide access to the rear parcel to the south. And you can see that there's a fairly large green space on the adjacent parcel to the north. And then their driveway is that little corner piece. This is more of a view to give you an angle and to see what's, how things look. This is looking planned north. And this is looking planned south. And you can see that there are the large trees and you can see the green spaces as well as the parking areas to the rear. That's not really shown on a lot of the plans. Excellent. And then this is looking to the east. And you can see a bit more of the overgrown hedge on the lower part of the page. And you can see how the joining structures are trotting in around the existing building to the in north. And then this is looking west. And you can see how the existing trees are basically screening the majority. I know we're in an aerial view, but they basically do screen the majority of the front of the property. In the Derek's comments, he was talking about existing trees that are on the site. On the left photo, into the left side, you can see the existing large street trees. These are not being touched in any way. Moving over, you can see the existing large mature trees. I will, in the next slide or two, I'll talk about these a little bit more in depth, but these end up being in the parking area. And then the photo on the right is the pine. And you can see it's actually got some severe storm damage. We're going to try to save it, but it's been my experience that, you know, it's going to be very difficult, especially with how the building lays out, and I can get more into that. So this shows the pervious and impervious, well, it's more pervious areas. So the large purple area is what we're, is the paved area. It's also pervious pavement. There is a slightly pinky area that is an island in between that, and that is the entry into the lower unit. It's a different material and it will have some plantings to it, but it's to provide a nice entry and to keep cars away from access points to the building. The brown areas are the proposed existing buildings. And then the darker brown areas are the walks and access points and patios and decking. And then we have the large, the two mature oak trees. You can see how they're laying out within the parking area. So saving these is not an option that we have. And then you can see the eighteen-inch pine that's in the back. And the, there is a dash line, and that is the drip line for all of these trees. The drip line for the pine is going to end up in the porch area, but it's also going to be in the excavation zone for the addition. It doesn't necessarily look like that, but as you dig down that for that foundation, you're going to be stepping back at one-to-one, and that will definitely be into that root system. So between the storm damage and the excavation and the site work, we don't believe the tree will survive. And we've accounted for that in replacement trees. So this is the layout specifically with banked parking areas. And you can see the purple area, the darker purple area. That is what we're proposing for the pervious pavement that Josh showed earlier. And then the lighter purple area, this is a different treatment, but it's also going to be set up to be pervious. This is the banked parking, which has the additional stalls. You can see how pretty much the entire area is purple and we are, it will be pervious. But you can also see how that lighter purple area disappears. So that different treatment is not going to be associated with its layout. It will just be a complete area of the pervious pavement.
Matt, do you want to just talk for a minute about the size of the parking spots?
Yes, absolutely. So all the, so in the, in the proposed area, this is, all parking spaces are nine by eighteen. And there's an aisle of twenty-two feet. And we felt that twenty-two feet is doable with backing out and your car movements in this circumstance. We didn't want to shrink the parking in this layout as, and because it's twenty-two, it's not quite the total twenty-four. But we also wanted to have that screening on the north side for screening the vehicles. And I'll explain that in a later show. When we get into the banked parking areas, the parking areas are still the sizes. We just have a couple of smaller spaces that are associated with access points in the front. So we didn't, we, those went down to, I believe, fifteen feet. It's not all of them. The rest of them are still the nine by eighteen.
Thank you.
So this goes into drainage. As I said, in the existing conditions, the lowest point on the site is actually in the parking area. So we are basically maintaining that where we have the lowest point is still in the parking area. All sites drain to that area. So you have the large green space to the lower left that we're trying to keep as an open green area for the people that would live here. And it all drains down and goes to the pervious parking area. All areas associated with the buildings drain away from the buildings into the pervious parking area. And then you can see along John Street, I mentioned this before, but it does come, the grade drops as you come from John Street heading west to the low space. And that's basically being maintained. To the north of this parking area is a retaining wall, and that allows us to keep that parcel to the north from draining onto our property, as well as we're not draining onto their property. So it's all contained within this depression. So the, the underneath the pervious parking area is our detention system. We, it's a pipe system and stone. It all goes to the inlet, which also function as an outlet and ties into the existing John Street drainage system. John Street drops in grade from south to north, which is why we have this funky bootleg that kind of chases to the, to an area that we can tie into. As I said before, this inlet that we're using is below the existing graded John Street. So that means we have to chase grade to point that works. The remaining portion underneath the parking area, the pervious parking area, is made up of stone and a pipe system so that we can drain this area nicely. So this is the planting plan, and this is based upon the parking area that we're proposing. In along John Street, we have light green, large trees. Those are the existing mature trees. And the extent of the green is actually to the drip line based upon aerial. Underneath those, we have existing hedges that run along the front. We're trying to maintain those. And we will reallocate some of the hedge as much as possible to maintain those mature hedges. And then we'll augment it along John Street with additional hedge that would match. To screen the parked area, it does drop in grade. And there is a little bit of retaining wall that hides a lot of vehicles. But we're also proposing shrubs and larger bushes along that. And then to the north, along the fenced, we have that five, four to five-foot hedge in that that green space. And that will adequately, you know, between the depression of the parking area and the plantings, we're hoping to screen that whole area very nicely. In the rear, we are proposing five additional, five additional trees. And these would be, help augment the trees that we are removing as well as provide some additional shade and green spaces. Along the parking area's southern retaining wall, to the rear of the existing building, we are proposing another area of shrubs. And that would run for the length of the detention, sorry, the length of the wall to the point at which it intersects with the patio that's there. So this would effectively screen vehicles from the green area onsite as well as provide a deterrent from anybody walking along the top of that wall.
Matt, do you want to just mention that the species that we're complying with the requests from the engineering department on updating the species of the trees?
Yes, so the existing trees we've updated to account for comments from the tree reports. So there's the coffee tree that was in there. We've replaced that with something that is more consistent with what the tree report identified. There is, we have some red maples that are in there. What else we got?
So we're going to be, in that regard, we're going to be just complying with the report?
Yes, yes, we'll be complying with the report.
Now, is that the, is that the Dan Dover-Milsky report? Or is that the Environmental Commission report?
I think it's Dover-Milsky report.
The Dover-Milsky report. So you'll be complying with everything in the Dover-Milsky report?
I think Chris has a list of items specifically that we'll go through at the end of each report.
Okay.
So this layout is with the full parking. And what we're showing is we're modifying the layout to still provide screening. We reallocated the location of some of the trees, but you can still see how we're providing adequate screening from the John Street area to block the depressed parking areas. And this is a typical fence layout. This was an item that was identified in one of the reports as to document the perimeter fence. to document the, the perimeter fencing.
Thank you, Matt.
Can I ask you a question? Matt, the engineering report refers to lot 17 draining on to the subject lot and the possible issue of the water backing up with the retention wall. Does your design make any accommodations for that?
So the, I've walked out there and seen that the, then you're referring to the northern lot. It, it does not actually drain onto our property. There is an existing wall there as well that we are augmenting. And that area basically drains to the parking area and then to the John Street area.
Okay. And one other question, the underground utilities seem to go fairly close to the street tree. Could you comment on, you had a, where you had the drip line of the street trees? And maybe show where the utilities go because they look rather close. And I'm just curious if it's going to cause issues with the, the two street trees that are pretty substantial.
There you go. So the, the existing utilities are, you can see the red one, which goes to the plan north. Electric also goes plan north. The water line may go close to the street tree. We can, we will relocate that so it's further north. What we're trying to do is keep it out of the tension system as much as possible, but that's not a problem to reallocate it out of the.
This is sanitary and gas lines as well.
There is, there are existing sanitary and gas lines out there, but we will, we're more than happy to, to work around that.
Great. Thanks.
Mr. DeGretia, a question, these additional slides, are they part of A1 or are they A2?
These are all, these are all part of the, the presentation that was submitted. Page 78.
So you want these all, they're all A1?
Yep.
Okay.
So here again, we have a view of the overall site.
We're looking at page 78. Now we're on 79.
Now we're on 79.
Yep.
Yeah. So this is a series of how the apartments stack in the two structure, two structures. We have a two bedroom unit on the lower level of the existing structure and the affordable one bedroom unit and two bedroom unit on the ground floor of the rear structure. And then we have two two bedroom duplexes in the, one two bedroom duplex in the rear structure and one two bedroom duplex in the front structure. And then we have a two bedroom duplex in the rear structure and a three bedroom unit, which is expected to be the dam residence right now. Although I suppose that, that which units are there is may, may end up changing, but right now that three bedroom unit would be allocated for them. The base of floor plan of the existing structure showing the two bedroom unit. Please note the bike and communal trash location tucked under the, the new addition. Sprab requested that we make some changes to this plan. They wanted us to realign the louver doors at the utility doors at the front, which we've done. We pulled them back to be in line with the building and to help screen it from the street. They also asked that we shift back the rear retaining wall so that the space is large enough to accommodate 14 bikes, which we've done, and provide for additional trash and recycling storage as well. We are taking this as an opportunity to locate all the meters from, for the buildings here as well. We do need to get verification from the utility and with the engineer that, that will be engaging in the future project phase as we go through, but that's the intended location that Sprab was looking for. You can also see here the intent to add an EV charging station in the parking lot. Right now it's just one, although in the future that may or may not change. But the, right now they're looking at one charging station, which will be added and the exact parking space that that's to be, still be, still to be determined. The first floor plan of these existing structure with the addition, please note that we expect HVAC condensers to be in the back screened with plantings roughly this location and not in the setbacks. Concrete scoop is now shown here at the request of Sprab, which is the side door of unit 166A there. The second floor plan of the existing structure, which will have two bedrooms up on this level, bathrooms and outdoor balconies. The rear structure, lower level units with one of the bedrooms with the one bedroom being affordable. HBC's report was not accurate. There is not a physical impact on the project for the addition of the affordable unit. The size and scale of the building are appropriate and do not change based on, on having the affordable unit or not having the affordable unit.
Is the affordable unit a two bedroom?
No, the affordable unit is a one bedroom.
Okay. You, you might want to verify that, that, that it can be a one bedroom and not a two.
We will have that discussion.
Sure.
You know, if, if we don't end up doing the affordable unit, if, if the variances aren't granted for that, this is our alternate plan without the affordable unit. But we hope that, that zoning will endorse the additional affordable unit and the associated variances. The first floor of the duplex apartments in the rear building, please note that we expect HVAC condensers to be in the side of the building, screened with plantings and not in the setbacks. The second floor, the duplex apartments in the rear buildings as well, and these also have outdoor, outdoor terraces off of them. After our HPC presentation and review, we took a step back and tried to organize some community meetings with less success than we had hoped. We also did extensive research and looked at the defining characteristics of Dutch colonial revival structures. Some of these characteristics are symmetrical facade, dormers, a gambrel roof, multiple materials and a change of materials between the upper and lower levels. Siding is most often stone, clapper, brick and shingles. So these are the, the most common defining characteristics of Dutch colonial revivals. We also looked at the other Dutch colonial revivals in the neighborhood and they're all clavered and they all change at the level between the first and second floor. Some of them just via color, some of them for a different shape claver, but they all do have that transitional point. And they're also, all the other ones in the neighborhood are rotated 90 degrees to the way this one is. After realizing that we are going to be keeping the existing structure and speaking with the owners about their desire to incorporate stone, we discovered there is a rich history of Dutch colonials which integrate stone and siding in a myriad of colors. As this is the only Dutch colonial revival with disorientation in the neighborhood, there was no immediate precedent that we could look to. So maintaining the uniqueness of the structure seemed appropriate. We took a look, close look at the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood architecture and discovered that the majority of the structures have rubble, stone basements and cellar walls. This is probably not too surprising considering that, that Corey Street was right around the corner, right in the middle of the neighborhood. And there are many exposed rubble walls like you see here. And there are also many that have been parched with stucco. There are also several houses which contain stone. Our conclusion from this is that our use of stone is not out of character for the neighborhood. And the stone we selected, we tried very hard to match the ledge stone, which is what was most used in area cellars and was most likely excavated from Corey Street. We also completed a comprehensive survey of the use of color in the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood. We discovered that 28% of the houses were white while beige and blue at 11% each come in second with red, lilac, pink and orange colors taking up less than 1% of the homes. The commentary from HBC that a blue house is not in keeping with the neighborhood is really not quite accurate. The neighborhood has a wide variety of colors. Some are tones, some not. And this in fact adds to the richness of its character, of the neighborhood's character. This is the front and side elevations of the project as presented to HBC and Sprab. We would request that the project be approved as we have shown. With the stone on the Dutch colonial revival coming up to the second floor gambrel line and creating a difference between the two structures, so they are not so well matching. So that here we have just a bit of siding and on the rear structure we have more and we end up having that as the gambrel line as the break. We do acknowledge the critique from HBC and we therefore offer to reduce the stone down to the cellar level of the structure, which in turn will match the majority of the neighborhood. We do lose the distinction between the first and second floors as a characteristic of Dutch colonial revival and the structures will not match and the structures will match in their use of clapper. But we would offer this. This is not our preference, but we will put this out there. Although we do not agree with HBC on the color of the structures, we are open to changing their color to a yellow or similar to what it is now. Again, this is not our preference. We feel the blue is in keeping with the neighborhood or a beige or taupe, which we feel it really ends up losing a lot of its character when we go this direction. With regard to the critique from Sprab and HBC that a modern addition was not appropriate on a Dutch colonial revival, we would like to point out that the Secretary of Interior Standards, which recommend that features specifically differentiate from old and new. And there should be a differentiation between a historic building and the new addition, which you see actually done very well quite often. We believe we have achieved this with the design presented to HBC and to Sprab, which you see here. After reviewing the project after HBC, we discovered that we were in fact eliminating one of the characteristics of a Dutch colonial revival in the elimination of the gambrel, which I'll flick back for a second and show you right here. Okay. So this was actually not really intended. So we modified the design to extend to complete the gamble as it currently exists, shrinking the modern feature by approximately three feet. In reviewing the existing conditions, we realized that the existing rear gambrel does not match, this rear gambrel here does not match the front one. And we will maintain the rear gambrel as it currently exists based on the HBC comments. With regard to HBC's request that we maintain the existing materials on the house, this is really not acceptable. The vinyl siding on the house has a wood grain and HBC typically rejects vinyl installation at all, but especially deplores the wood grain vinyl siding. Concrete block railing is completely foreign to the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood and honestly, it looks sort of bad. The stucco on the lower levels of the house is significantly cracked and has allowed significantly moisture and mold to penetrate into, into the structure. The aluminum plating on the columns is an also strange condition. And the brick that was added when the aluminum was installed is also out of character with the Dutch colonial revival at having brick just on those piers. Okay. And it's also sort of an odd, this is a singular building in the neighborhood. There's no other building that has these same material features. Here you see the existing view from the north on John Street. Please note the existing lower entry allowing access and entry and lower grade. So here's the entry drive right here in front of us and it comes down. I'm assuming everyone can see my hand. Comes down to the lower level where there's currently a garage door. So we'll be basically, you know, pitching down our drive right there. And we're on page 105. So the proposed view from the north on John Street with the new foliage accurately depicted. We did not have this rendering for HBC and Sprab and as a result, we believe that many of the screening comments were based on a misunderstanding of how the structures were, were screened with the foliage that we were planning. As an architect, I won't be able to see the buildings that we have designed. So the proposed view from the north on John Street, here we eliminated the plantings to better illustrate the structures. The stone continues up to the gambrel transition point here, which is noted in the typical Dutch colonial characteristics and also helping to differentiate the two structures. So the structure in the back has two stories of claver and this structure has two stories of stone. So that they're not so again, matching, matching. Here we show the siding coming down on the Dutch colonial. We felt the structures again were too similar in this form, but we'll accept your recommendations if this is what is preferred. We do prefer the stone up higher. The existing view from the east on John Street. The existing view from the east on John Street with the correct foliage depicted that illustrates the screening of the structures. And then again, the proposed view, and this is what Sprab and HBC saw without the, the foliage. Again, please note that the rendering removes the plantings to better illustrate the structure. And then this view is when we eliminate the stone at the first floor and the siding will come one level lower. Okay. So this project is appropriate and compatible with the existing structures in the district. It does not adversely affect the character or appearance of the district or the relationships among the structures. It does not adversely affect the exterior architectural features or the character of the neighborhood. The height proportion, solid void relationships and building relationships of the proposed new structure and addition are all visually compatible with the rest of the district as is the relationships of open space between the project and adjacent properties. The relationship of scale of entrances, portions and roof shape. Our site fences, walls and plantings are visually compatible with the district. Our parking is screened from view with numerous plantings while still ensuring safe sightlines to John Street. The relationship of materials, texture and color of the facades and roof we selected for the project are also visually compatible with the district and enrich the visual landscape. With regard to the existing structure, street facing façades, we believe that our alteration of the structure will enhance the architectural value of the structure, eliminating the stucco and vinyl elements, using more durable materials that are more aesthetically pleasing and provide a richer historic character for this typology in this neighborhood. We believe the project to be sensitive to the historic character of the district, appropriate to the existing density and will contribute to the well-being of the neighborhood and the historic district. It promotes a desirable visual environment, the conservation of the historic district, sustainable practices and resources incorporating the best features of design to create a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. I'd now like to introduce our planner, John McDonough.
John. Hi, everyone. Josh, you want me to take over the screen at this point or you're okay flipping through?
Yeah, just tell them the one next and I'll, I'll go through it.
You got it.
So John, can you briefly touch on your qualifications?
Sure. Hi again, everyone. For the record, John McDonough, M C D O N O U G H. I am the project planner. I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and in good standing. I am also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a national certification that lets us testify anywhere in the nation. I testify in a nightly, on a nightly basis throughout the state. Tomorrow I'll be in West Windsor live in person. My firm has been here in Princeton before. I think it's been a while since I've personally been here, but I've, I've testified in the ring of towns all around your community.
Okay. We would accept you as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Take it away.
Take it away.
Okay. So I think the witnesses have established a good foundation for the planning conclusions that would go with this application. We've put together a slide packet of approximately 10 or 12 different slides. There are going to be a series of maps to help illustrate site context, some photographs to give you some site condition. As the board well knows, every variance application needs to relate to a specific piece of property. Every variance application needs to have consideration with respect to neighborhood compatibility and with respect to the vision and intent and purpose of your, your. And with respect to the vision and intent and purpose of your your zone plan and your master plan. We're going to start off with the obvious, we have a very simple tax map here, we've outlined the subject property in yellow. Block seventeen point oh four lot number sixteen, it's a single tax lot. And the obvious jumps out here right off the bat. That we are dealing with an exceptionally large piece of property in the context of the neighborhood on John Street. You can see the tightness of the lots that flank the subject property and that line up and down South Street. And then you can see to the left or what would be the west, the opening up of the land on block sixteen point oh one lot number one. Which has now pulled in multifamily development compared to the smaller lot development over on on John Street. So the lot itself sits as I'll say a transitional lot. Between the smaller lot development that we see on John Street. And the higher density development that we see over to the west. Another important thing jumps out.
Before you go on, we're still dealing with Exhibit A1, he started on page 112.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that, Chris. So another important attribute about this piece of property is the shape of the property, not just the size, but the shape. And you can see how this property projects further back or deeper than the other properties that flank flank the subject property. That's another distinctive quality or distinctive attribute. That there are influences on this property that we don't see on other properties as well. And the obvious here is that the Merwick Stanworth property. Is immediately adjacent to the subject property and in fact, the subject extends further back or is a notch in that development. Compared to the other lots on the street. Next slide, please, Josh. So now we go away from the geometry of the lot and we look at the physical characteristic of the lot and the established pattern of the neighborhood. Again, as you've heard, we're dealing with a structure here that is a contributing element to the historic district and keeping that building. Is on par with one of the pillars of your master plan and that being historic preservation. The applicant is working with the land that is there now and you heard through the opening testimony, I'm sorry, through the opening comments. Of council that there is a history of this property, it is generally cleared, generally flat. Ideally suited to accommodate development in the rear in the form of infill development. Again, sort of forming a blend, if you will, of the land use context that is around it. And you could see the the mass and scale of those. Multifamily buildings that are immediately adjacent to the subject site over at Merwick Stanworth. You also get a sense, as Josh had said, of the tightness of the buildings that we have over on John Street. With building to building separation that's five to seven feet. This is actually notwithstanding the fact that setback relief is needed here. This is going to be a much more spacious development than what we see on the street itself. Importantly, in terms of zone conformance, this application is providing for four times, actually. More than four times the amount of open space that would be required in your ordinance. Twenty six hundred square feet being required, the applicant is providing over eleven thousand square feet of usable open space on this property. So zone conformance is just as important as as the relief that the applicant is seeking. Also important here, the floor area. Aspects of your ordinance are being met and the building coverage aspects of your ordinance are being met as well. So from a mass and scale standpoint, in terms of the buildings themselves. There is compatibility and harmony with the intent and purpose of the zone plan and ordinance. Next slide, please, Josh. So usually when we do this map, we see a lot of different colors, here we've got a singular color. This is how the MOD four land use classification system, color codes, land uses in the area. And you only see the gold color here, which is an indicator of residential land use. We don't see any red, which is a typical indicator of non residential land use. So notwithstanding the fact that we need a D1 use variance here. The use itself being residential is clearly in harmony with the residential pattern of the neighborhood. The relief that the applicant needs in the form of D1 is the fact that we have two principal buildings on one property. Which is not allowed in the R4 district. Obviously, we have that happening in the lot behind us, which is in a different zone. But again, just talking about the transitory nature of this particular lot. We think there is a good blend of everything that's happening around it. Fourth slide, please. Okay, so this shows the zone district that we're in, we are in the R4 district. You heard through Josh's testimony that the applicant is seeking 10 variances. If the affordable unit were to go away, that variance list gets down to six. And if the applicant were to subdivide the property and start from scratch. All of the variances go away, there'd be zero variances. Whenever we look at a variance application, we look at the degree of departure from the zone scheme. Here you could have six units on two lots, the applicant is asking for an additional unit. On the same mass of land and that additional unit will be an affordable unit. So I think the board can give some deference to the inherently beneficial nature of an affordable unit. And I'm sure the board well knows that our courts have established that an affordable unit is inherently beneficial. Whether it's one unit, whether it's a hundred units, it all has a contributory aspect to a municipality's obligation. Even if that municipal obligation has already been met, inherently beneficial status does not go away. So it's an important consideration with respect to the positive criteria and including that. Inherently beneficial aspect in in this particular application. Next set of slides are going to take us down to the ground level. The next three slides you'll see are just fairly recent vintage, we took them at the end of July. This particular view is from John Street, just gives a sense of the front facade, gives a sense of the left facade as well. And of course, those important trees in the front of the property. I am also a landscape architect, I'm not testifying in that capacity, but. Just as important as preservation of buildings is preservation of vegetation. And that's exactly what this plan will do as well. Those are beautiful trees and very well worth saving in the context of the landscape. Next slide, please. So this is just a head on shot, again, looking at the tree, looking at the character of the building. Essentially, what you see is what you'll get in terms of that that front facade. I know there may be some design details that have to be worked out with historic, but I think our. Our architect here, our development team has given great care to respect the sensitivity and I'll say the vernacular of the building that's that's there now. Next slide, please. So now we go from the front to the front and the right facade, again, giving a sense of the characteristic of the area. The spaciousness of this site compared to the string of buildings that are next to it. And you'll see as we start to work our way down the street, how tight those those other buildings are. Again, the important aspect of this application is what you see is what you get. With the exception that that barbed wire fence is going to go away as as part of the application. Next slide, please. This is just panning to the right of the prior view. Giving a sense of the influences on this property that may be atypical of other lots on John Street. You can see the larger multifamily building in the background. Again, this is going to be an effective blend of that which is there and that which is around the subject property. You get a sense of the driveway that's there, that's the curb cut that the applicant is going to work with. And then extending back to where the proposed building would be. You saw through Josh's presentation that that mass in the back would effectively be blocked by the new building. Which would sort of pull this this, I'll say, lower density pattern or these smaller buildings. Into the street and taking away that influence of that building on the streetscape in the background. Next frame, please. So we've now walked to the to the left of the subject building and this is the path that works its way back. To the subject, to the adjacent property, to the Merwick Stanworth buildings in the back. The subject property would be to the right where you do see the dumpster in this particular location. You get a sense of the vegetation in the rear. And then in the next slide, we're going to pan to the right, giving a sense of the openness of the backyard. Giving a sense of that that tree that's there now, that that white pine that will be impacted. Hedge separation from the multifamily in the back and the general. Openness of the land that is is well suited to accommodate the development that's before the board. Next slide, please. So now we went back on that path, we shot back with a look at the dwelling itself, the back of the dwelling. This is the vantage where the addition would come off the back. The applicant is seeking relief for a side yard setback relative to that paved driveway. Importantly, it's a paved driveway, not a building, but it is continuing the line that's presently there. There's some case law involving a barn about continuation of a of a line that's already been established and has a justification. For setback relief, we'll dive into that as we go into the proofs, but I I think this gives the practical sense. At pulling this building back, the addition in the rear. As Chris had said at the outset, only seven hundred square feet or so. A relatively modest expansion of of the building that's presently there. And it's off the back of the building, not off the front, so what you saw in the views from John Street are again, what what you'll get. Next slide, please. So this just pans back a little more, give a sense of the surrounding land use context. From that paved driveway and the land behind the building. Again, giving a sense of the landscaping to mitigate the visual impact of that side yard setback that the applicant is seeking relief for. And then I believe the last two slides will simply give a sense of the established development pattern on John Street. You get a sense of the compact spacing of the neighboring buildings on John Street. This particular view is looking to the south or to the left from the on-street views that I previously showed. And then finally, the view, the last slide I'll show the board. Is the opposite side of the street, looking to the north and again. You get a sense of the nice compactness form of development that has established on the street. This is certainly not going to be something that is out of character with the streetscape or the established pattern, but in fact. Keeping what's there, but has been a longstanding part of the local landscape on the street. Pulling in another element that will help blend this particular site to the area that's around it. With that, I'll conclude with the foundation and I'll, I think, Josh, maybe if we could just scroll. All the way back to the slide that lists the variance relief, so we just have a little. Scorecard for the board to help them remember the relief that the applicant is seeking here. I think it's upwards of slide 20 or something like that. And as Josh is taking us there, there we go. Okay, so there are again. Ten variances that the applicant is seeking relief for, there are two D variances and then the rest are lower level C variances or bulk related variances. Remember from the next slide, if we were to color code, there you go, the variances that would be eliminated if we would take out the affordable unit. Density relief goes away, parking stalls, they're only related to the affordable unit, that would go away. Parking in the front yard would go away and the number of units in that back structure being that three of the maximum allowed. Four would propose, they all go away if we go with the affordable unit. And then finally, you just flip to that next slide, all of the relief would go away. If this was a fully conforming development application with a two lot subdivision and and three units in each on each lot. So to walk the board through the statutory criteria will take each variance test by test. Primary relief, of course, is the D1 relief to allow for. Really related to the form of development, not necessarily to the use per se and the fact that we do have two. Complementary multifamily buildings that would be on this site. We've run this through the Medici test for use variance relief and find that. All four parts of the Medici test are passed here and walking the board through the the elements of proof under Medici. The first part of the test is what we call the site suitability test or the the particular suitability aspect. Where we look at the development promoting the general welfare because the site is particularly suited to accommodate these these dual uses. The site is particularly suited by virtue of its context in that we are in this mixed setting. We do have multiple dwellings on the immediately adjacent lot. And there is a projection of this lot, so it does become somewhat of a notch from a physical planning standpoint. In the context of that that greater development. Also, the lot is particularly suitable for dual use or for for two buildings. By virtue of its condition and the fact that we do have a substantially oversized lot. Even if it were subdivided, these lots would be larger than those other lots that you saw at the outset. So both the condition of the property, the spaciousness of the property. The fact that it has been historically used for higher intensity of use or I'll say a non residential utility type use. Going back to that barbed wire fence around the perimeter of the property and the taller structure. And again, the mixture setting all give credibility or weight to the particular suitability aspect of the test. Second part of the test moves away from the physical characteristic of the land. And moves over to the land use law or what we call the special reasons test. And this always pulls us back to those core purposes of zoning and municipal land use law or those fundamental purposes under. NJSA forty colon fifty five D dash two. There are about twenty or so purposes that are outlined there. None of those purposes are being substantially violated by this particular application. But I think the board can find a substantial nexus with several of those. Special reasons or those purposes of zoning, including purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare. For the reasons that have been stated at the outset. Preservation of the existing building, maintaining harmony with the neighborhood in terms of the look along the public realm of the street. Also to provide for a variety of housing types that will meet needs of all New Jersey citizens. Also to provide for a desirable visual environment that goes towards purpose I of the land use law. This is going to maintain an attractive building, preserve that attractive building. It is going to add an element to that building as well and a complementary building in the back. Architecturally, landscape architecturally, this is going to add quality to the visual appearance of the site. I should also say that we go towards purpose G, the provision for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. And then finally, purpose M, planning goal to efficiently use land. Your master plan talks about this, your master plan recognizes that land is at a premium. But there is a scarcity of land and encourages creative solutions, infill development. It's exactly what the applicant is doing here, taking. Land that is essentially cleared and flat and ideally suited to accommodate development and that's where that that proposed building is going. Third part of the test focuses not on the land, focuses not on the land use law, but focuses on the greater neighborhood. This part of the test looks at the potential impacts on the surrounding neighborhood and the surrounding properties. From a planning standpoint, based on the evidence that's before the board now. You have a good body of evidence to demonstrate that the site can function safely and efficiently. Without putting anyone in harm's way, without creating any substantially detrimental impacts from a public health standpoint. From a public welfare standpoint, no substantial nuisances have been identified with respect to the proposed development. This is going to maintain adequate privacy, use and enjoyment of the land that is around the site. We'll come back to that as we go through the bulk relief. But from a planning standpoint, no substantially adverse impacts on the surrounding land use context. There is an interrelated density variance, we'll come back to that. But you do have evidence on the record that talks about compatibility on a dwelling unit per acre density. With respect to the surrounding neighborhood. Fourth part of the test takes everything I've said and now focuses not on the established neighborhood pattern. But the planned pattern for the neighborhood or the vision for the neighborhood as articulated in your master plan. I find that this application is not substantially inconsistent with the intent and purpose of your master plan. I've gone through the recent examination of two thousand and eighteen and of course, the recent amendments in two thousand and twenty. No substantially, in no substantial inconsistencies with the intent and purpose of the master plan. In particular, the advancement of the three pillars, common goals that we find as a repeating thread throughout the master plan. Number one, historic preservation of buildings. Number two, preservation of the landscape, again, falling back on the fact that this is. An infill development of land that has been previously developed. And then finally, the pillar of providing for affordable housing. It's over and over in your master plan, the applicant is doing that here voluntarily as well. Which triggering this additional relief that the applicant needs with respect to density. So again, in terms of the D1, based on the substantial credible evidence on the record. I believe that the Medici test for D1. I believe that the Medici test for D1 use relief is met. Interrelated, the second line is the relief related to density and the fact that the applicant is seeking relief with respect to the lot area per habitable space. 22,500 square feet is what would be required based on the habitable space or the habitable rooms that the applicant is providing. 17,707 is what the existing land area is. This equates to essentially one additional unit, which is that affordable unit. And again, we show this color coded in red, which means if that affordable unit went away, so does this density relief as well. So you think that the positive aspects of providing for affordable housing would outweigh any detriment associated with that additional density. On the positive side, all of the D1 benefits that I just stated and the positive criteria there would carry forth down to the D5 relief of density. Additional density is necessary to effectuate a beneficial project. And on the negative side, no substantially adverse impacts with that additional unit. We're looking at a density in terms of a dwelling unit per acre that is compatible with the surrounding land use context and not creating something that would constitute overdevelopment or over intensity of use at this particular location. Whenever we have density relief, the key or core aspect of the test is whether the applicant has made adequate provisions to accommodate the density that's proposed by virtue of the testimony on the record with respect to water capacity, sewer capacity, parking capacity. I believe the indicators of demand are met to accommodate the density that's being proposed here. The next bundle of relief, the next three or so variances all relate to the positioning of the building on the site. Side yard setback is going to be proposed at 9.5 feet versus 15 feet. This relates to the addition in the rear that I spoke about and the visual evidence that I provided to show that this is essentially a continuation of that which is presently there. The immediately impacted land use is a driveway, not a dwelling and can certainly be mitigated by landscaping. We do have a court case known as the Harleo case, which involved a barn with an expansion off the back that had very similar relief that the court found was appropriate in terms of granting the relief. Fourth, and I would move that that relief is justifiable under the flexible C balancing test whereby the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh the detriments. I think the board can also find an element of hardship there to the extent that the applicant is working with the land and the structures that are lawfully existing thereon. That's a basis for hardship relief under subsection C1C of the land use law. Fourth variance relates to the rear yard setback and this is the new building. This is the dimensional relief with respect to the deck at 16 feet, whereas a 25 foot setback would be required. This is the area that extends into the notch to the multifamily development in the rear. We believe this relief has been mitigated by virtue of the landscaping that's there and that's proposed to soften and provide a nice edge to, I believe substantially obscure and separate the proposed building from the surrounding buildings. And again, providing a setback that certainly provides for adequate light and air in the context of the neighborhood. So I would say the board has adequate evidence there to move favorably under the C2 balancing test of the statute. The benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh the detriments. Next relief relates to that impervious coverage, 49.3%, whereas 36% is the maximum that's allowed. You heard about the mitigative measure with respect to porous pavement that can provide for a drainage mechanism to offset the runoff and also the landscaping that's being proposed to soften and prevent overdevelopment in the form of a sea of asphalt on the property. And falling back on the fact that the applicant is providing four times more the open space on the property than the ordinance would otherwise require. That too, I would offer meets the statutory test under the C2 balancing test. The next bundle of relief predominantly relates to the parking and believe we have three variances there. The parking stall size, we have two spaces that are undersized in the context of your ordinance and the RSIS. They both relate to the affordable unit. They meet the width requirement, which is important. They don't meet the depth requirement. But again, as you heard through the testimony of the engineer, the 15 foot width, I'm sorry, 15 foot depth and 16 foot depth are reasonable in the context of sound planning and engineering standards and will not create a substantially adverse impact. That I would find the board can also move favorably under the C2 balancing test. Parking within the front yard setback to be set back at eight feet, whereas 15.7 is required by the setback of the building. Again, this relates to the provision of parking for the affordable unit. It is going to be mitigated by the landscaping in the front of the property and the nature of the terrain with somewhat sunk in effect topographically. So vertically, horizontally, there will be a mitigating impact with respect to that parking in the front yard setback. So only on the side of the building and it's only a partial extension in the front. Importantly, this is not going in the front of the building that's presently there head on. It's going off to the side of the building. The driveway setback for lots that are over 50 feet wide is approximately 3.5, I'm sorry, three feet, whereas five feet is what's required. This is a de minimis deviation. It's essentially a replication of the driveway that which is presently there. You saw that in my photographs. Three feet is certainly adequate to provide for a green edge that can mitigate any impact on the adjacent property. The second to last relief relates to the number of units in the back structure, four being provided, that's the extra affordable unit, whereas three is the maximum allowed. And then finally, the parking aisle relief meets a reasonable engineering or design standard. 22 feet is something we commonly see with respect to parked structured parking. Can certainly work with surface parking as well through the testimony of the engineer that the movements will function safely and efficiently. So the applicant is also seeking relief in that regard. I would offer that all of the bulk variances are subsidiary to the relief that the applicant is seeking here. They're part and parcel of the use relief and the overall site betterments that are coming forth as part of the application. They all tie together. And in that regard, I believe the applicant has met its burden for the relief that it's seeking, for all of the relief that it's seeking here. This is clearly a better zoning alternative for the property and starting from scratch, knocking down that home and putting up two brand new homes would be fully compliant with the ordinance, taking down those trees. From a planning standpoint, adaptive reuse is favored for its efficiency. And in that regard, I would offer that the board has credible evidence to move favorably on this application. Statutory criteria are all met and approval is warranted. And with that, I'll either pause for questions or redirect from counsel.
Okay, Mr. DeRose here.
So as you can see, a lot of thought has got into that, this project. I think we just shared 126 slides with all the information. And you know, overall, this is something that has a whole lot of positives. And I'm not going to restate them, but you know, from preservation, lead silver, affordable housing, four times open space, ADA compliant, three ground floor levels for people with access. You know, the preservation of the existing landscape. And most importantly, it gives the opportunity for a family to realize one of their dreams to live in Princeton, which they've been on the outskirts for decades and but part of the community. So we're very excited about this project and that really gives you an idea of where we are. We're here for questions if you have any or if the public has any.
Well, I, when we, I guess you did touch on, you did touch on the memos from, you know, all the memos from Dan Dobermilsky and.
I can go through real quickly if you like. So we'll start first with the engineering and zoning report dated 2/24/20.
Wait, 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 let me get it. Okay. All right, we're going to go to engineering first.
So there's a report dated 2/24/20. When you get down to the sections, there's basically section 1.0, 2.0, 3.0, 4.0 and so on. We have no objection or no concerns raised by any of their comments with the exception of 4.0B1F, which talked about the shading of the parking lot and planting some additional trees. Based on our sun shading studies, I believe it was pages 56 and 61 of our presentation, we've addressed the shading in the parking area and we would like to propose our landscaping as we have shown in our plan. So that was really the only comment there. Everything else, we have no problem complying with. The landscape architectural plan review, so that's Dan's report, same thing. We agree with all the comments. His paragraph 3D was the same as paragraph 4.0B1F in the engineer's report having to do with shading over the parking area. And I think we've addressed it through the sun shading studies. So we would like to propose our landscaping plan because it, you know, with the way the structures are, you're going to get a lot of shade on the driveway as it is. That gets you, gets us to the shade tree report, 1920. We have no objections to the comments raised in that report. Then we have the environmental commission report.
Wait, 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 hold on, I'm writing like, I'm writing like Matt here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
So the environmental commission report dated 2/27/20. The first comment was about the 24 inch oak tree and we've shown on the plans how we really can't design the parking area. So it's really not possible save that tree. We're proposing the minimum number of parking spaces to limit the impact the parking would have on the property. And we, you know, we're replacement trees are being planted elsewhere on the property. We have a number of very nice additional landscaping elements which we've shown in our exhibit. Comments two through five are certain recommendations that have to do with energy improvements, passive house principles, exploration of solar, exploration, investigation of electric vehicles. Those are paragraphs two, three, four and five. We're in the process of investigating those. We've represented that we are designing or this has been designed to a lead for home silver standard. With those items, we're in the process of investigating and trying to figure out what type of rebate, rebates and grants are available. And if we're able to do it and it's not cost prohibitive, we would try to get as many of those elements into the design, which already, as I said, is already a lead for a home silver standard design. With regard to SCRAB, grab that myself. Paragraphs one through four, no objection. Paragraph five is the issue of the setback. And I just want to, if you could turn, turn to page 32, Josh, just so I could point it out. I think it's best shown on there. Okay, yeah. So on page 32, you see the back building and then you see the drawing of the porch. That porch to the property line there, oh no, I'm sorry, not the rear, the side, the side up. We're talking about, yeah, right there. That porch is three, as we proposed it was three feet. SCRAB recommended pushing it back to five feet. The actual building is 7.3 feet. But what I wanted to point out here is if you take a look at the property line, right by that corner where the porch is, that is actually the multifamily development known as Merwick Stanworth, where you have the building at 47 feet. So even though we're only three feet, it's not three feet from any of the residences or properties that front John Street. Well, with the exception of the little tab below for emergency access. None of those homes, we're not asking for setback there. So the question that this board will have to take a look at is whether or not the three foot or the five foot would be appropriate. And based on what Josh had shown, we were looking at the three feet in order to maximize the green space area. But more importantly, aesthetically from John Street, it was nicer to have that gap. So that's really the one question there.
Let me ask you something. If that, if that is three feet, go back to that other slide.
Three feet to the porch, not to the building.
I understand. Can you go back? No, that is the slide that showed the site plan. If that, what you went, yeah, if that's three feet, if that's showing us three feet, what's the, what's the adjacent parking setback between the curb line and the property line? I thought we were at three feet there. If you're three feet on that porch, there's virtually nothing in there.
I believe that's also three feet.
Not, it can't be, it's tapering.
It goes from three to two feet.
So, so the three feet, so our hedge row in there is going to be possibly in a two foot, in a two foot area.
Matt?
Correct. It's between, it starts at three feet and it tapers down to two feet towards the front.
Yeah, it looks pretty, as it gets to the street, it looks very, very small. Okay.
So, yes.
Matt, just to clarify, this isn't, this is existing, right? We're not.
That is existing, that's correct.
No, I understand that, I understand that. But, but you're not at the number of units you have and the parking is different. Okay.
So with the number six, they looked at the, okay, let me see, what's number six here? They looked at the roof line and I think Josh went through in his testimony on page 121 to talk about how we've adjusted the design to keep that characteristic part of the roof in the back. So that's what we're proposing. We redesigned it from what we originally showed them. That was what they originally saw. And then the next slide, that's what we're proposing. So it's slightly different. We looked at it and that's the, that's how we're, that's how we're proposing to address that. We have no objection to seven, eight, nine. We don't have an objection to, that's the preservation of the tree in the back. Although our testimony is we think it's going to be lost. We'll do whatever we can to preserve that evergreen. It's in poor condition and the roots are going to be disturbed. But if the, if they like us to take a look and try to preserve it, we will certainly do that. 10, we have no objection. And as well as for 12, 13, 14. 11 and 15 again are the charging stations and the solar, which is something that we're evaluating the strategies and looking at if they're, if they're, if we're able to put them on the site. And 18, I guess 17, we don't have an objection to. 18 is the fence and we're objecting to keeping the existing fence. We really want to put a new fence in there. And I think we went through the testimony and showed you what we proposed.
Yes.
19. Oh, we believe that the planting beds and the engineers would confirm that it will support whatever we plant there. We have a lighting plan as part of the silver, civil drawings. And we did have our architect take a look at the room for a small table in 21 and he has confirmed that it will fit, it will fit. So those are just more explanations rather than objections. That brings us to historic. Elizabeth Kim produced. Elizabeth Kim produced a historic preservation report dated 7/7/20. We don't have any objections to the first comment. No objections to the second and third. And I believe we addressed them at the meeting there, as well as the fourth. Number 5, let me just find it here. That talked about looking at grading to change and save the rear pine tree. But it's not an issue of grading. So grading will not impact or save that rear pine. It's an issue of, you know, the, the actual.
The angle of proposal excavation.
Yeah, exactly. 7, I mean, 6, we have no objection. 7 is an issue that they raised regarding the stone, which this board is gonna have to decide. I think you saw our application this evening with evidence and examples of stone and how it was used. And our client really likes the stone, we think it's very appropriate. But this board will need to decide whether stone or the, what's the other material we're looking at, Josh?
Clapford.
Oh, yeah. So, and also, does it go from the first level down or just to the bottom? The bottom level, the low ground. So that's something that the board will have to decide. Number 9. I think that was talking about the screening. Oh, we looked at other possible areas for parking, but it just doesn't work the way it's laid out. We have access to the site at this one location. If you try to get parking in other areas in the rear, you're just extending impervious coverage. The grading doesn't work well. We've done a lot of evaluation when it came to this site.
We would have needed permission from the university as well to get access to the back of the site.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Numbering is off. I think you're on number 8 on the memo.
Yeah, 8.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, number 8. And we don't have any objections to 9, 10, 11, or 12.
And what was your comment for 5? Was that one of the?
5, we said that the grading's not gonna have an impact on that pine tree in the rear.
No, that's, this is the color of the building, the blue.
Oh, I'm sorry, my notes were misnumbered then. Oh, the blue is, that's actually.
I gave testimony to that today.
Yeah, so what we're proposing, we still, we like the.
You would like to maintain the blue, you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it's a very personal preference, I think. I think we made a case that there's a lot of blue in the neighborhood. We showed some other colors, but I guess the board could decide. You know, my clients, you know, are gonna live here, they prefer this color. We would hope that the board would find that this is an attractive color and we believe it, you know, matches 10% or 11% of the rest of the neighborhood in terms of having a blue. So I guess that's something for the board to decide as well.
Mr. Chairman, whenever you feel it's appropriate, I would like to be able to respond to the presentation made by the applicant in response to HPC, whenever you feel it's appropriate.
Certainly, yeah, that's all right. As soon as Mr. DeGrazia is done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Then we can get to the board memo that came up after the meeting. The first paragraph talks about the use of stone. That's again, something for the board to decide. The second paragraph talks about the modern addition. We believe that the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation allows that. And we demonstrated a revised design that's keeping with the characteristic, you know, gambrel roof fully intact based upon the comments that both Scrab and HPC commented on. Paragraph 3, most of these were in their original report, but they're, again, repeated here. Has, you know, talks about saving the single rear pine tree. Again, it's not a grading issue, we're gonna try to save it. Paragraph 4, we don't have any objection to that. Paragraph 5 again is the color. And again, it's something for this board to decide if they like the color or allow the applicant to pick the color. And number 6, this comment, we really don't know. It says new buildings should relate better to streetscape. Not, not really sure what that is or what was meant there. It was just unclear to us. We think that it relates very well in the front to John Street and very well to Merwick Stanworth in the back with the, you know, 200 and plus units of multifamily units in the back. So the relative grades and differences in where the buildings are located, we think relates very well. And I think that was part of our whole presentation. Number 7. Oh, that was talking about reorienting the building, but it's really not gonna change. The rear addition of existing building is made to living. So the rear addition to the existing building is not a new unit. That 700 feet is to make the units above more in keeping with modern uses, a little bit more spacious. So we, you know, shifting or relocating the unit in the back and turning it 90 degrees really is not gonna make a difference because we need that additional space for those, for, you know, modern living in that first house. With regard to 8, this talks about the screening of the parking corks and we believe that we've done a good job showing how we're gonna screen that with the hedge row on the one side and the landscaping in the front. And the issues that were presented, I guess, to the board tonight are really issues for the zoning board to decide, since it's their jurisdiction. And we hope that we would have those decisions this evening and not have to go around again, since we've been about a year and a half now going through and designing this. So we're asking the board to take a look at it and make the, the board under the ordinance has the authority to make the decisions and we hope that they do. And that's it.
Can we get, can we get from you in writing a list of everything you just said?
Absolutely.
You know, we have the recording, so we'll have to go through it from that, but we can use that to work from.
Absolutely.
Mr. DeGrazia, this is Karen Casey. I have just a question for you. The engineering zoning report, if you went through that, I missed it. So is your position, you're complying with all the comments in that report?
Yes, there was only one comment with regard to putting some additional shade trees in the parking area that we said that we were hoping not to do because we think that there's enough shading and that from a functional standpoint, it works better. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, Josh has it in writing already.
Just one, can I just, are you done, Mr. DeGrazia?
Yes.
Okay, just off topic here for a moment. Karen, Derek, we have, we have on our agenda 29 Green Street. It's, it's after 10 now and we haven't gone to public comment yet or board discussion. I guess we should just sort of see if the board's willing to. I mean, I'm fine until 7 o'clock tomorrow morning, so I don't care. But, you know, do we wanna, do we wanna try to get to that tonight? Or do we wanna, we wanna just defer that till our next hearing?
I don't know how long that case is gonna take. I would, I don't think it's a quick case. But there is an increased fee for the court reporter after 10:30, I believe.
Okay. So, so if the people, so should we defer that then till next time?
Well, I think, I think the question, is someone here for the applicant? I think, would that be Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, good evening, Ryan Kennedy for the applicant. You know, I, I'll say, Mr. Bridger was upfront with us. We knew that this application could be long and it looks like it will be. We, we don't see us getting through. You know, it's hard to tell how much left you have here on, with public comment and and the current application. But it, it doesn't seem like we're gonna get through our application this evening. So we would, you know, we would defer to the chair's discretion. But if you could take jurisdiction and carry us to the next meeting, then we would be acceptable to that.
Okay, do we, Karen, you said we do lose our court reporter at 10:30?
No, you don't, you don't lose the reporter, but the court reporting firm is gonna increase the fee after 10:30. So if we limit, if we stick simply to our current application, then that increased fee would need to be borne by the 166, 168 John Street application.
Well, I mean, I'd just like to hear from, I mean, I would, quite frankly, not knowing how much longer we have to go, it would make sense to me to carry it to the next hearing. But I'd like to hear from some of the other board members to see if they want to try to do this tonight.
I agree that it should be carried to the next meeting.
Okay, anybody else have a comment?
I agree as well on the carry, carrying the meeting, the hearing, rather.
All right, so if there's no objection, then we'll, Ryan will carry Green Street to our next, our next meeting?
Can, can we do that, Derek, in terms of our schedule? Does that create, is that, how does that work?
That's.
Can it just go into the next meeting or next?
Yeah, I mean, it'll go to the next meeting. These kind of things, you can do the best you can, but you can never really say how long a meeting's gonna take, so.
All right, so for the benefit of the public, the jurisdiction is in order, the noticing was correct. The board's gonna take jurisdiction and carry it to, and what is the date of the October meeting?
October 28th.
I'm sorry, October?
28th.
28th, all right. That means that the applicant will not be obligated to renotice. So if we have anybody in the public who's listening tonight, this application will be carried and heard on October 28th. And we need an extension from you, Mr. Kennedy, because we're up against our deadline under the municipal land use law to take action. So Derek, how much of an extension you think we'll need?
The end of October, October 31st.
Okay, do we have your consent to that, Mr. Kennedy?
You do, and I'll follow up with Claudia if something is needed in writing.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Okay, let's continue on. I'm sorry about that delay.
No, no, thank you, appreciate it.
So what, Mr. DeGrazia, what's next?
I think we're open for questions.
Well, okay, let's, let's, Elizabeth, do you wanna say something?
Yes, I just wanna address some of the comments that were made by the applicant in their presentation. And some of this is probably just for clarification as well and some as to support HPC's comment from their meeting. One of them, one of the comments was made that the portable housing is really not gonna create any impact on this project. But as the commission has stated, that adding a new, an additional unit will increase the building mass because it has to be developed to accommodate another one bedroom, which also creates parking demand. And because of those two, that reduces the open space. So it does have an impact. The second thing that was discussed was the Dutch colonial. And HPC will appreciate the fact that the applicant did hear what they talked about and their concerns. And I think that these were some of the same concerns that some of the public who had spoken at that meeting also expressed. So that, I think that that's a great thing. But just for the applicant to understand that the stonework, what they were saying is that there is stonework on Dutch colonials in Princeton. However, within this neighborhood for the Dutch colonials that exist there, it is not common, it is not present. So that's why they felt it was not appropriate. Because right now, the lower part of the house is stuck out and the upper part, as you said, was or is vinyl siding, whatever. But the vinyl siding was existing. That's not something that they approved. That was something that already was there at the time that the district was designated, Stirk District. So even though that that might have the texture of, you know, of grain or something like that, that's always something, when it's new, they would not support that. To go down as far as the color of the buildings, there are blue buildings within the Widdespoon-Jackson neighborhood. But as they had mentioned in their memo, in the neighborhood on John Street neighborhood, and you had actually represented on your sheet T13, that there really isn't any that are blue within there. They're more the neutral tones, the earth colors, the tans and things like that. So that's why they were saying, contextually, within that neighborhood on John Street, they felt it was not appropriate.
Elizabeth, this building here that's blue is across the street on John Street.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the ones that you had given us on that sheet. So I don't see that blue one, Josh. Apologize, unless it just doesn't look blue. Is it 159 maybe?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure the number, but it's on our page 94. We, it's diagonally across the street. It's probably going that direction, it's probably more like 100, 120, John Street, somewhere in there.
Okay, I just happened to be looking at your sheet where you did a really great job of giving that streetscape on the side of the project property and across the street. And so I'm just looking at those photographs and I'm assuming that's also what the HPC was referencing as well. So, and if there is one blue house, it's probably one at, which is not a majority. And I think that they were trying to state that they felt it was appropriate to keep the color that it was or similar. Let's see, the other thing is that I think that there was a question that Chris had, the new building should relate better to the streetscape. I believe that that comment came from the commission members that they felt that the building, the proposed building in the rear did not relate that well to the rest of the streetscape as presented by your professionals. It shows that this is, the buildings are really closer to the street. And that's the way the streetscape is presented. And much of the Widdespoon-Jackson Historic District is about the streetscape. So that's what they were kind of talking about. They were also, you know, that was their concern, just about the placement and siding of the building in relationship to the streetscape. They didn't give any specifics about it, but that was just a comment. Number 7, I think that that also, you look for an explanation. They were not opposed to an addition on the existing house. And Josh, you're absolutely right, Secretary of Interiors, which also is the way the HPC reviews it, that they don't want a copycat type of addition placed on the building. They want something that, they are not opposed to anything modern, but it does have to be compatible and sympathetic to the historic building. And I think that they felt that there were elements of the building that could be modified to achieve that. And I think that you worked on that by adjusting the gambrel roof adjustment. So in any case, that's just to clarify that question that came up. And number 8, which talks about the seven-car parking lot, what they were saying is, from the streetscape, and I know that you had provided a lot of photographs, but the one photograph that really wasn't shown is the one that you can really look, if you're more towards the right of the property, towards the adjacent one, and looking into the site where you really see the parking lot. They felt that this is a neighborhood and that really came across as a parking lot. So they were. Yeah, so I mean, even if it was angled more too, but yes. And even with the buffering, with the landscape, the streetscape, that type of thing, it's still pretty open. And that's one of the reasons they said if it's possible to consider breaking up the parking, not necessarily. And that's one of the reasons they said if it's possible to consider breaking up the parking, not necessarily removing all of it there, but perhaps break it up into different sections, so it didn't look like you know, like seven parking spaces in one area. I think that was intent, again, to keep the streetscape, to have it more homogeneous to what's there. And I think that that's it. I think that was it as far as the comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth, appreciate it.
Okay. I'm sort of losing track here. Do you, is that, is that it, Mr. DeGrazi?
Sure, sure. One thing, Elizabeth, on your first comment, I just wanted to clarify. The affordable housing unit, I just want to make sure that everyone understands what the issue is there, is it doesn't affect the massing or the bulk of the building. The affordable housing unit, if it goes away, would be assumed by one of the other units, so it would become living space of
It would become unexcavated space.
What?
It becomes unexcavated.
Yeah, okay, oh, I'm sorry, that's what it becomes. I knew it didn't change the mass or the structure itself. What happens is, and why adding one little affordable unit, and just, I just want to make sure everybody understands this, why it is so interesting and it adds two parking spaces is because your code rounds up. So, under the other, you know, the six units that are proposed basically have nine parking spaces. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, nine.
Yeah, there would have been nine.
Yeah. And when we add the affordable unit, because we're at a point five number, we add another 1.5, it actually goes up two. So from not having the affordable to having affordable, you go from a requirement of nine spaces on site to 11 spaces. And that's when, if you fit 11 spaces, you have to push it into the setback a little, and you have a space that's smaller than the 18 by nine. And so it kind of triggers all these little ones. But if you look at the impact, we felt that it was very de minimis for the, for including an affordable housing unit, which we thought was a really wonderful thing to include.
Well, as the HPC said, they're always in support of affordable housing, however, they feel in this situation that it impacts the property more than they would like to see. And I didn't understand when you said if you eliminate that, that it would be unfinished foundation.
I can show you again here.
It's just unexcavated area in the back of that building, that's all. So there wouldn't be anything there, just be a voided area.
Yeah.
They wouldn't have to excavate it, so it's, it decreases the overall square footage on the property.
But visually, it doesn't really have an impact. And if that unit doesn't have a car parking, a car, it doesn't really have an external impact at all too with regard to parking if the person living there doesn't have a car. It changes the requirement, but if the board decides that you want seven parking spaces, it's not going to have a visual impact at all, whether or not the affordable housing unit is there or not. Or we could have seven and bank the additional four. So we went, you know, we went into this with a very open mind, trying to give both SBRB, HPC, and of course, the zoning board, the ability to kind of weigh these and make decisions. You know, we think it's wonderful to have affordable housing, and we tried to make it work, but if you feel that it's not, we could take it out. We could meet all of the parking spaces requirements in terms of number there. Or we could bank it, which is a better approach, because we don't think it's needed, it's less impervious. And we think that the seven is more than enough, even with the affordable housing unit. So we kind of went in this with a very flexible idea that, you know, would like to kind of, you know, make it, make it work the best way, so we come up with the best plan.
Okay. Is that it?
Oh, yeah, we're open for questions, I guess.
Okay, do any of the board members have any questions? Anybody? All right, because if there are no questions, I'd like to open it up to public comment, and then we'll, then we'll go into executive session.
Steve Michael Floyd, I have a question.
Go ahead.
From a number of people, I've heard, you know, well, in the alternative, we could eliminate the house and start from scratch. I, could you tell me where you have the right to knock down the house in an historic district? You won't get, you won't get a demolition permit, will you?
Well, you make a case, and then you go before, and you make the case for demolition, and you go before the boards, and then you have rights of appeal. And the question is, I mean, this is not a historic structure in its own sense. It's within a historic district.
That's what I said.
Yeah, but, you know, with everything.
Yeah, you don't have the right to knock it down, you can appeal it, but.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, Michael, I'm not sure they don't have the right to knock it down. And it isn't, it is
Well, I guess Elizabeth Kim could tell me if they have the right to knock it down.
Well, since it's in a historic district, that it would have to get approved by HPC to be demolished.
But what is, what is your criteria for demolition?
So there's also a notification publication that they have to place, and they have to also notify property owners within 200 feet before coming before the commission. So if they find that it is significant and that it should be retained, then they will not support demolition.
Okay.
I think it's important to note, though, that, you know, we started the process there thinking that we were going to demolish it. But we've invested so much into keeping the structure and making the site work to accommodate the structure. Our preference is that you approve the plan as we presented tonight, keeping the structure.
Okay, no, I, I happen to think that keeping the structure is a good idea, but
I mean, I have to clarify one thing, so we, there are people who present alternative schemes that are like, okay, here's a nuclear option, we'll tear this down. That's not what we were intending tonight when we presented, okay, our process. We explained our process and how we went through and how we originally looked at it. But that doesn't mean that we don't think this is a better solution, and we do think this is a better solution. We think keeping the house is a better solution. We think everything that we've done here is a better solution than tearing down, down the, the structure, okay? That was the process we went through. We're not proposing it as a nuclear option. And I just want that to be clear.
Okay.
Michael, anything else?
I'll do it in the discussion period.
Okay, are there any other board members that have any questions of the applicant in the presentation? Okay, so let's, let's open it up to the public at this point. Claudia, do you have people waiting? Claudia?
They're moving over right now.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, am I up?
Yep, yep, we can hear you.
I think, can you please identify yourself, and then our attorney will swear you in?
Yes, I'd be very happy to. My name is Sam Bunting. I'm a resident of 99 Dempsey Avenue, Princeton, and the property owner of 242 John Street in Princeton.
Bunting, you swear, from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment on the proposal. As I mentioned, I'm the property owner of 142 John Street, which is a rental. And so I spend a lot of time in the neighborhood, and I have a
I think I can hear everyone again.
Okay.
Yes, I can hear you.
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Okay, who's next, speaking?
We were waiting for Steve to rejoin us. Steve, are you back with us?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
And Trevor was speaking, I think.
Correct. Also, I see some comments on chat. Some people were questioning why they didn't get a notice, written notice of the meeting. It's my understanding that all, everyone on the list within 200 feet as generated by the tax office did get a certified letter. But if somebody wants to raise that question again, we can wait till we've got everyone together with us, all the board, and then you can ask that question again.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Have we solved our recording problem?
Looks that way.
Looks like. So I think, Mr. Little, you were speaking when we had sound issues.
Yeah, okay, I can continue. I was just reiterating that I agree with the previous commenters who are opposed more or less to this plan. For one area of concern is the parking lot. It doesn't feel like a neighborhood. It looks like, like a commercial parking lot in the middle of a neighborhood. Traffic is a big concern on John Street, especially speeding cars down John Street. And we have a lot of small children and younger kids here that I feel worried about crossing the street and, and losing the green space as well is another area of concern. That's all from me, thank you.
Eve, you're muted. Eve, I think you're muted.
Sorry, excuse me, sorry. Okay, is there anyone else out there? I keep seeing notifications popping up that there are other people out there.
Steve, several people have sent something in the chat room saying they can't figure out why they didn't get a notice of the meeting by certified mail. I made this comment before you rejoined us. Certainly, my understanding that everyone who was generated as being within 200 feet, that's based on a list that's put together by the tax office and the zoning office, all those individuals received a certified letter. And that is the certification that has been submitted by the applicant.
Okay, so there may be people in the community who weren't aware of it, but not necessarily within that 200-foot radius.
Yeah, or, or it may be that you may feel you live very close by, but based on how that 200-foot radius is measured, you didn't fall within the 200 feet.
Okay. Okay. What are those, those people out here that want to speak?
I believe he already spoke. He's not in, within the 200 square, 200-foot list. I just checked the owner's list, so.
Okay, so do we have any?
Steve, I see, I'm just going to say for the record, I see six people in the attendees group, and they're welcome to just be listening in. None of them have indicated that they want to speak, and I think everybody that we, I think everybody on the other side panelists are either the experts or the board members. I, I'm saying this out loud partly in case anybody's wanting to speak, and they need to let us know. If their face isn't on the screen, we can't see them raising their hands, so they have to, I don't know, how else to?
Okay, well, if there is, if there is anybody out there, please identify yourself so we can recognize you. All right, well, Karen, I was hearing no one respond. I think we can close the public portion of the meeting.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. DeGrazi, do you want to respond to some of the comments?
Yeah, I certainly do, and I think my architect as well. Generally speaking, I just wanted to kind of take a step back and start to look at the property again in the sense that this is a very, very unique property. It's gigantic. The house in the back, if you take a look at that compared to all the houses on John Street, the structure doesn't even start before all of their backyards end, end. So in a way, it's almost on a back lot, and it's unique that way. So if you look at some of those early slides we showed you, like three or four, you see that this is not a typical lot. It's very big, and the design was carefully looked at. When we heard concerns and that people wanted to preserve the existing structure, we all of a sudden had to focus on that and do everything we can to work that into the equation. And that left us very limited room in terms of access and from one point. And, you know, it sounds like, you know, some people maybe suggested breaking it into different units, but, you know, that increases the, you know, increases the actual development. We were trying to preserve a big pocket of open space, and as our planner said, we went through and were able to, you know, quadruple what would be, what would be, you know, required. So even though this has a plan, it's very logical in the way it's, it's laid out. The back house is set back, and there's going to be trees and landscaping and a huge distance beyond everybody's backyard before you see it. And then that closest structure to that house is actually Merwick Stanworth. And that building is multiple, multiple units, I think it's 43 feet away, and it goes like a block long. So it is uniquely situated, and we tried to minimize any type of impacts and reduce any type of impacts in the design. I think we put a lot of thought. And when you look at the streetscape, the buildings behind it tower above it, and on the other side of the street's larger. The density is not, if you're looking at strictly acres per unit, this has so much less than many of the other properties. It is a site that we put a tremendous amount of time, and this is a substantial investment. You've also heard the testimony, I think somebody said this was LLC. Yeah, that's how it's owned, but it's a husband and wife. And you've heard how it's their plan to live here in the community, in this house, have the ability to retire here and, and have some support for their, for being able to live there with rental of other units, how some of the units will be for their son or their daughter, if they're able to locate in the area. That's, that's what this is about. This is the diversity, this is the ability to have different people and different, you know, have different types of units within walking distance of downtown. The affordable unit, which we thought is a really big selling point, is, you know, The affordable unit, which we thought is a really big selling point, is, you know, seems to have a couple of negative comments, which to me is just baffling to be able to produce a unit this close to all of the downtown infrastructure and bus routes and all of that great stuff for rent that's, I don't know, a couple, Josh, do you have an idea what the rental would be based on across the street, their, the unit there?
It depends on what the, what the municipality sets it for, if it's gonna be moderate or if it's gonna be very low or, or low. There are, there are three levels that come into Princeton.
Yeah.
I can tell you from across the street, the studio apartment that's at 30 McLean is, I believe it's a low unit, and it's $400 a month.
Yeah, $400 a month. I mean, that's a great opportunity for somebody to be able to qualify, pay $400 a month and live in this location in this wonderful neighborhood, which we think will be families, and we think, you know, it's, it's really something nice that I think from the tenant's perspective is gonna be very much appreciated. Josh, I think you said you had a couple of comments where you wanted to address a couple of things.
Well, I mean, first, I just, I'm not sure I made it clear earlier. We, we did put out to have three different community meetings. We did reach out to members of the neighborhood and the community. And, and Yina, I'm really disappointed that you didn't pick up the phone and call. Specifically, we emailed you directly at least 30 times to try to get together with you and set a time that you could talk about the design with us. I, I can't say that we were able to connect with everybody and, and, you know, I, my goal is always to get as wide a community input as possible. You know, the couple of community meetings we did have, you know, we had people show up and have people provide input, and we, we think we responded to, to their input. I mean, that's, that's, we tried the best we can to hear from as many people as possible.
Steve, I don't know if you're seeing in the chat room.
I see, I see notes popping up here.
Well, it says some participants want to comment, but they are having audio difficulties.
Well, like, can they call in? We have dial-in numbers.
We do. I think we'll have to ask people if you're hearing this.
Well, I mean, if they're listening.
Right.
I guess I could read off some of the dial-in numbers.
Alex just needs to be unmuted, I think. Or is that, maybe I'm wrong, that Alex is one who wants to speak.
I just don't know.
Oh, Vincent, okay, let me see.
I don't have an unmuted button.
Let me see if, here, I can. Vincent should be able to speak now.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Great. Mr. Stanley, if you would give us your address, please?
It's 131 John Street.
All right, and do you swear if your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So I would just like to comment and agree with Alex, Trevor, Yina, Jean. This is a, this is a very large, this is multiple units. It's, it, it sounds like people are talking about having fam, you know, families come in, which is something we really love to, to have in the neighborhood. But this doesn't really seem like inviting families in to live here. It's, you know, maybe a few units, you know, a few units that would maintain some of that area. It's it's a beautiful-looking area. Again, the loss of the green space. It does kind of look a little like a strip mall from the street view, looking at the parking lot. And so I just wanted to make that comment, and I appreciate everyone's hard work with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's see. Eve, is there anybody else out there?
Not that I can see. I mean, nobody's signaling, but I, I, I know that we're all, this is new technology to some people, but I don't, I don't think so. Does anybody, like Alex was aware of somebody? Do you know, is anybody aware of anybody else who might want to speak who is having trouble getting through? I don't, I don't see any, any indication of it.
Okay. All right. Karen, can we, can we safely close the public portion of the hearing?
I think so. We're not seeing any other comments from anyone or requests, so.
I see one, one in the question and answer. There's a red number one in there. What would that be?
Well, this is someone anonymous who is commenting. Their comment is simply, there's only one affordable unit, so.
All right, so I think at this point, we can close the public portion of the meeting and go into executive session. So, well, I guess there are no, Mr. DeGrasse, do you want to make any closing comments? Or you just want to give it a rest?
No, I, I think what we said kind of rests on its own. I think by our presentation, we feel this is a really nice design stemming from both the uniqueness of the property and preserving the historic structure. I keep on saying historic, but the, this, the older home that exists there. And the design was done in a way to kind of minimize impacts by placing the additional units in the rear next to multifamily rather than on the front of the street, and we believe that separation does create a lot of nice positive elements. We think that affordable housing is great. This was designed to preserve the open space, so you have a lot of open area, which would be great for kids. You know, that's the type of spots and places, like that backyard is not, is, is kind of rare in that neighborhood. There's not a lot of big open green area like the preserved area, the green court in this backyard. And it's going to attract, I think, families and people that enjoy the outdoor space because this plan accounts for that. So we appreciate the board's time. We, we, we're here if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. All right. Let's, we'll go into executive session and, and open it up to board comments. Go ahead. I'm sorry, who spoke? Does anybody want to speak?
I would like to see this slide from above that shows the green space.
Wait.
Wait, you went a little too far. Go back.
Do you want to see the, the, we have the, hold on.
I think you just ran through it.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, just stop for a second.
You want to see in the context of the other buildings?
I was showing.
See it in the context of the other buildings.
All right, so I gotta keep going back, I think. Here.
So, yeah, so you can see the large ones in the back and the front as well.
I'm not sure what the, the one comment from some, one of those community members about breaking it up and building several different units back there. I don't see how that would have increased the green space for anyone.
Well, the interesting thing about this slide, it's, it's, you know, presents an interesting, an interesting view because you have the existing house with green space behind it, and you have the, the new structure with parking in front of it. And I believe that, given the fact that there's an alleyway that goes back to Merwick Stanwick, that's not accessible to this property. It pretty much dictates that if you're gonna have any parking, it's gonna be exactly where it is now. So I think, and again, I, I'm not crazy about the big parking lot on the street there with the building behind it, but I'm not sure that, that you can, in fact, I'm pretty much positive, you really couldn't pull that towards the street and get back behind it to park. So it, it's kind of an interesting situation. Steve?
I, I, it's curious because, I mean, the part, the off-street parking certainly pulls the cars off the street. I mean, like somebody said, most of those houses don't have garages or driveways, and so.
I mean, look, when you look at the scale of these structures, you know, the existing house without the addition on it is a little larger than what you see around it, and obviously with the addition, it's quite a bit larger. And it's in scale, the overall structure in the front now is in scale with the back structure. But it's a big lot. So.
And that's a Photoshop picture, so it's not probably not exactly accurate.
Well.
Those are what you get.
My, my feeling is, just to throw this out, I, I think the project is nicely done. I don't like the seven units. I would be happier with six units, including one affordable unit. And I think that the, the parking concerns me because I want to make sure that there is enough parking because, again, there won't be any street parking available for these residents. So I just want to make sure there is enough parking. As far as some of the comments from the, you know, for instance, the HPC comments in terms of the use of stone and color. I would think that although I do like the blue, I would defer to the HPC to resolve those issues of, of the use of stone and color. I would, I would agree, as I think Mrs. DeGrasse did, to go back to the HPC to allow them to look at this again. But I would think that I would defer to the HPC in terms of that. And those are my comments right now.
I took just the opposite view. I like the blue and I like the stone going halfway up the.
Oh, no, I like the blue also, but again, that's my personal preference and, and, but we do have a historic preservation committee and, and I think, you know, we really need to respect their opinion in my.
They didn't seem to be aware that there was a blue house across the street.
Well. Notwithstanding that, I still feel that I, I'd like to have HPC participate in the decisions.
Oh, can we stop right there at that, that slide? Is, is this the view with the banked parking? I just wanted to be clear.
This appears to be the view with the parking that they're going to provide. It looks like that little island between the white car and the gray car is their bank parking.
Well, and the bank parking would, would cut this hill down.
Yeah, we'd cut down the.
Trees would slide over, these bushes would slide over.
Got it.
Cutting into the hill more here.
Yeah.
If we did the bank parking. This shows the seven parking spots with the little patio in front of the entry.
Yeah.
Okay.
And a tree in the middle of that.
And so the apron actually becomes, the, the entry drive is, is more narrow in this version than it would be with the additional spots. Is that correct?
It looks like those two large plants that are just at the top of the retaining wall would come out.
Yeah.
Well, no, we, we're, if, here's my horrible sketch, so forgive me, but here, the two trees would move over to here. These plantings would move over to here as a buffer there, and the retaining wall would stop approximately here. And it would go around there, and it would cut back there, and you'd end up with additional spots. One of those spots, the one that's here, is the one that's in the setback, which is what we need that extra variance for.
Yeah.
And then we also get two more spots back here.
Right.
So we add two here, and we add two there. But this, what's shown here gets us the seven parking spots, which I, I think, based on what we know about parking these days, is appropriate.
Okay. Okay, so I, I, I support the, the project. I, I feel that the, the site is actually an outlier for the neighborhood, and the density of this project is consistent with the neighborhood. I am open to discussing whether it should be six or seven units because the, the six knocked off, I, I can't, I lost track of exactly how many variances it.
A number of variances.
Yeah, and, you know, when I look at, at the table of usable open space, you're within the required open space regulations, I, I, I find that the density is acceptable for the neighborhood. And in terms of the, the historic preservation comments, I, I actually support the blue as well and the, you know, I, I feel the, the, the lower amount of stone, you know, stopping at the lower level was, in my opinion, preferable, but I, I will, yeah, I, I can leave that discussion to others. Yeah, this, this was my, my preference.
I would still, I would still, I, I really don't want to eliminate the affordable unit, but I really feel strongly about the six units and the elimination of a number of variances, and I would hope that the applicant would consider six units, including one affordable unit.
I could certainly talk to my client, but the whole, I mean, this is a husband and a wife, and this is a huge investment. The additional, the, to support the affordable unit, you need enough density, and this is already a very small density. You're only talking about, you know, six units total. So it would be really difficult to put this much into redeveloping a site and, and then the back unit restricting it. Again, there's no affordable triggered or required. This is just something we're trying to do to go beyond.
No, I understand that, and that's what I, that's what I'm saying. I.
I could, I mean, I, I don't, I could talk to them, but, I, I mean, the cost of holding, because you lose money on affordable, is, will, you know, I, I don't think it will work, but I could certainly talk to them.
Okay. Any other board members want to say anything?
Yes, Steve, I'll, I'll say a few things.
Sure.
I think, starting with some big-ticket comments, I, I have to respect the zoning code regarding no more than three units per building. So on that part of the code, I would like to see one unit eliminated, and if it's the affordable, so be it. I think also, there's the other issue of even though Josh doesn't like, you know, disagrees or other, other municipalities do density different, the habitable room calculation. I tend to want to respect, that's how the town does it. And it doesn't, it doesn't comply with the code to have, what, 22,500 square feet, you know, generated. It doesn't get down to the 17. So I have a problem with that. You heard some of the neighbors. You heard some of the neighbors, and it's some of the neighborhood, talking about, you know, density. And I, I, I think some of the feeling in the neighborhood is, why is it keep being this neighborhood? Whether it's where the accessory apartments got approved after we denied it.
Yeah.
You know, why, why is it the variances and creating these multiple units here? And why don't we see it other places? And I think that's, that's part of why some people made the comment about density. A supporter of this application, Sam Bunning, talked about this creates housing stock for others, needed housing stock. But I also have a problem approving a lot of variances for a project that's a number of the units are likely to be occupied, according to the applicant, by family members. It's not open to the public, if that's going to be the case. You know, I, I, in an earlier community meeting, they did mention their daughter, but at this meeting, it was a couple other. So it's creating units and asking for variances where more than I'm comfortable with is likely to be occupied by family. And that's not really serving the community. That's, that's another comment of mine. So I'm, I'm a little hesitant for approving a lot of variances. Sam Bunning also said about the parking, you know, historically, this neighborhood was a neighborhood where there were less cars. Well, historically, the neighborhood was, a lot of people had a whole lot less money. And they didn't have cars. This is a different time. You know, as someone, my mother was, grew up in this neighborhood, and I lived in it the first 12 years, yeah, a lot of people walked to work, you know, because they, they worked at the university. A lot of people didn't have cars. A lot of people didn't have a lot of money. But the population that's going to rent these units are not that same population. So, you know, everybody has a right to housing, I understand that, but don't, it's not really helping people at, you know, price points that I want to see help. That doesn't mean I don't support this project. Generally, I think the rules allow them to have three units per building. I have no problem with the two buildings on one lot, they're just not subdividing it. But I, I think there's reasons why people have made these, these comments, especially on the density part. And, and again, why is it so often this neighborhood? And it's, the neighborhood is, is dense, and therefore the reason is it can support more density. Now, this site is an unusual site, there's a lot of land there. So I, I, I understand that and support that aspect of it. I'll have a few more comments, I got to go through my notes here. As I said, I think a couple of the variants, the D-variants, you know, regarding the seven units versus six or three units per, per building, I think it is not the affordable housing, you know, Mr. DeGrasse said, it triggers little variances. That, to me, is not a little variance, and I think we should respect that. Let's see. You have to bear with me, I took a lot of notes and I have stored a few things. I've mentioned some of them. One, let's see here. Eliminating some things. I do, I don't have a problem with the color, I'd like to see less stone, you know, just on the bottom part, but as far as color, there is no consistency in this neighborhood. So I'm, I'm not sure that any color's out of character. A lot of the houses were covered with very cheap vinyl, so it's not like the greatest quality colors. Just a brief comment, I, I don't think it, it means too much. The, the planner mentioned that this is a transitional lot from Merwick-Stanworth. It's not a transitional lot, Merwick-Stanworth is totally separate from John, from John Street. And I, I just, you know, had to mention, I, you know, it's, it's, it just is, I, I don't know why he was comparing it to that. Let's see. I think that covers my basic comments on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, Michael, I agree with you on the, on the six units. I'd rather see, again, the, the applicable zoning governed. But I still feel it would be nice to have an affordable unit.
Yeah, and some people from the neighborhood, the first community meeting of a small group, Josh Edwin, and I commend him for it, said they'd rather be, the affordable be a two-bedroom unit.
Yeah.
That way.
That it wasn't, it wasn't giving up enough. But I, I respect their right to, to have it be a one-bedroom unit, and I also respect the code that there be no affordable unit. It's not a make, it's not a make or break thing.
Yeah, you could change the affordable to a two-bedroom from a one-bedroom if, if that was the way the zoning board wanted to keep seven.
But if we wanted to do six?
If you wanted to do six, then they're not going to do an affordable. Doesn't, there's no requirement, and it doesn't make financial sense.
Okay.
I happen to agree with Michael on this. I think the three, three-unit without affordable is probably a better thing, and it eliminates a lot of those unnecessary variances.
Yeah, it eliminates a lot, a, a, a whole host of variances, right.
I also, you know, it's, I think Michael made an all, a, a really good point, too, and I, there's no way of knowing, of course, but you know, is it a, isn't it extended family home for one family? Or is it really an apartment?
Yeah, we could, we could have the, the applicant talk to that. I, I might have been misunderstood, just to clarify, that I was saying it was an opportunity for the son and daughter. Now, I don't know where they are, I don't know if they work in the area, but I was looking long-term, like, they love Princeton, and, you know, some of the conversations I've had with the client is that, you know, if, you know, their job takes them in here, I don't even know what ages they are right now, but that they were looking long-term as a place for the husband and wife to retire, and then something that the kids at one point in time would be there. I don't know if it would all happen upfront, we could talk to them about that, they can answer it, but I, I didn't want to make sure I didn't misspeak, Michael. It's that whole idea that they all love the area and they want to live there, they have the opportunity to occupy that, maybe five years down the road, maybe 20 years down the road.
Well, the, the meeting, I appreciate what you said, the meeting, the small, small meeting I attended in, in Josh's office, you know, many, many months ago. Now, she said one of the family members was going to likely live there, right? Now, even if more family members move in down the road, and that's sort of a projected end game, you still ended up with units that are created that'll eventually be taken away from the general public. That's, that's just, that's just how it plays out. And I, I have a little bit more problem approving zoning variances with that partial benefit or, or taking away from the general public.
Mina, Mina, did you want to clarify? Because I don't want to, I don't really know your situation.
I'd love to clarify that.
Yeah.
So yes, Mr. Floyd, we did meet in December at Josh's office, and my, I don't remember if my daughter was there with me. But yeah, we have a couple of kids, and my mother is 81 years old. So what I meant and what I want to clarify is, other than my husband and I taking one unit, one of the larger ones, because we want, this is our final home and our retirement home, that between our kids and my mother, we might need an apartment.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. At the earlier meeting, you did mention your daughter, you did not mention your mother until tonight, and you did not mention your son. That's, that's all I'm saying. Now, if you're saying
Yeah, my son, my son was still in school, and he graduated, and he lives in Boston now, and my daughter is in Washington DC, so it's very unlikely. My mother will probably be living with us because she's getting old, you know?
Okay.
But I would like to have more families with me, but
And you
It's an option.
You have the right to do that, too. I'm not saying you don't. I'm, I'm just saying I'm less sympathetic to variances.
Mr. DeGrasse, it's Karen Casey, I just have one clarifying question. Obviously, your plan is retaining the right to make these apartments or condos, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we can, yeah, yeah, exactly. It's under the common ownership, exactly.
So they may rent them, or they may sell them as condominiums, correct?
I don't think that's their plan, but I, I, I don't have any, we were not proposing any limitations at this time.
Okay.
Then I, I have a question for Derek. Is that permitted?
Yeah.
There's Multiple owners on one, one lot?
Yep, happens all the time.
All, all the time, no, no, but there's a code that allows it as opposed to what a variance.
Yeah, it's not, if it's a two-family, each unit can be kind of minimized. It's a three-family, there's no, no code that regulates it.
And there doesn't have to be a lot subdivision?
No, I mean, it's similar to Avalon Bay or Palmer Square. When they came in, you know, they, they could do them as apartments or condominiums, it's just the way it is.
Okay.
Ownership.
Yeah. Which will be not that affordable to that many people. But that's okay, that's reality.
Thank you.
Any other comments from any of the board members?
My thoughts are, are fair much in line with what you all have said previously. I, I'd support more of the six units than the seven. I think that the, certainly, more parking feels good as far as utility, but I think that the size of the, of that bank parking lot is, is, is very, very large and would be much more taking away from the character of the, of the property and of the, of the site. So I definitely support a smaller footprint for parking if it's, if it's workable. I, I certainly think that they did a very good job of the presentation, I think it was very, very thorough, I think they have thought through, you know, it's a big site, but it does have some, some significant challenges with slope and access. So I think they did a pretty good job of trying to work through the problems as best as they can. So, you know, there were, one or two things that are kind of minor, that just on the landscape side, there's just one thing that they, Lanzier Vargheta did mention, Dombrolinsky, is that, that if we were to approve the retaining wall and the, at the bottom of the site along the parking is going to be very, very narrow, and that the planting strip would be very narrow, and he didn't think that that would actually support plants or hedge along that, as it gets very, very narrow, like we said, like down to two feet. So one of his recommendations was to put a fence above the retaining wall. And it putting cart before the horse, but that was just one of the comments that I had, because I agree with pretty much everything else that we were all saying, but I just had notes there that he thought that potentially there might be challenges with the screening on that, that north-facing side. And also, he thought there might be some challenges with some plants in the, a little planting area by the entry, although I do like that, the area with the perennial pavers by the entry, I do like that, but he did mention that might be a problem to actually have plants survive in that area. My other, you know, comment really is to, and I had the question about the affordable unit. Yeah, I think it's very nice to be able to have that, but if it triggers all of these additional variances, I think that is, that is problematic for me as well. I think having to be able to reduce, reduce the number of these variances is, is kind of paramount in my mind. That's it for me.
Thank you. Can I ask?
I have a question for Derek, if I could, Steve?
No, go ahead, finish and then I'll
Yeah, based, based on his, his memo, and I'm, you know, trying to understand that the actual use variance for density is based on habitable rooms and the square footage that it needs? That's, that's correct, Derek? What I'm reading?
Each habitable, one, two or three habitable rooms has a certain required square footage of the lot area, so you add up all the habitable rooms in the, in the building, and that's how you
Yeah. So if, if the existing lot area allows for 17,707 square feet, even if we take away the affordable unit, it doesn't lower the number down to that number?
We can get to that number.
And I kept some other rooms in.
Yeah, I, I think if you just take the plan as is and remove it, I think we get within 192 square feet without any further adjustments, and then we could maybe adjust other things to eliminate some rooms and, and maybe do away. But at 192 square feet, it's really not a huge
You mean, taking one unit out is only going to save 192 square feet of space?
No, no, by taking out one unit, it puts us within 192 square feet of compliance.
Okay, I see, okay.
Instead of, yeah, wherever it was, I don't have the exact numbers here, I don't know many of your engineers, but it gets us very close.
Okay.
Okay.
So in, in addition to the other four variances that are going to be removed, this one, although not completely removed, will be de minimis at that point.
So if we, if, if we go with the six units, what, what is the site, go through the variance that we're going to eliminate, the variance that we could eliminate now?
So if, if you go through, so let's just start with the four variances that we talked about possibly eliminating. The number of parking spaces for this site goes down to nine. Our current plan shows seven. So we could show, we could re, instead of adding four extra spaces, we can add two and create nine, or we could have seven and bank the other two to see if they're needed. Or for that matter, we can have eight and bank one, there's a lot of flexibility, whatever the board feels like.
Okay.
Our requirement goes down to nine, and we can meet it outside. We will meet it, and we will not need to make a, a, a parking stall size that's smaller. So we will have the nine by 18, so we're going to remove the, the small, the small parking size for the two spaces that we had. And we will not need to, we will not need to have banked parking in the front yard setback. And we remove the variance of having four units in a structure, so we'll only have three units in the back structure. So we will no longer need a variance for number of units in a structure. And then the density calculation goes down tremendously to, I guess somebody on my team could give you the numbers, but I think it's basically within, instead of, you know, from 17 to 22, the difference is only going to be 200 square feet at that point.
Okay. So you'd be, okay, that's fine.
Anyone, my engineer and architect, anyone disagree with it? I just want to make sure. Thank you.
But the yard requirements? But the yard requirements, the yard, with the rear yard require...
Yeah, so I could, I could go over those real quickly, just to summarize. So we will still have the depth, we would still have the variance for two buildings on one lot.
Right.
That's a virtue of not doing the subdivision. The side yard setback, we would need, the existing structure is 9.5 feet
Right.
off of that side. We're going to be extending along that, so we would need to allow the existing structure to be expanded, so we'll be in that 9.5-foot setback.
Right.
And then the new structure in the back, we originally proposed as three, and we can adjust it to five. That would still be a, a setback, but we think that it's good at three, but...
And that's what Scrabbe had recommended.
Scrabbe recommended five, which we could also do.
Okay.
The rear yard setback is 25 feet, and as you've seen in those pictures, it basically has a long area, then a parking lot, and then a massive building. We found that...
Well, we can eliminate, Chris, we can eliminate...
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to say that. So the rear yard setback, the building is at 25 feet from the rear yard, but we do have a 16-foot deck. So, I mean, I'm sorry, it's 16 feet to the deck. So your decks count as part of your structure.
Right, right.
So that would trigger the variance, but if we remove that and create a patio, we could take off that variance, but again, we thought a deck was nicer. And again, it's up to the board, we could remove that variance, but there's really no impact since it faces the massive parking lot and building in the back. And then that gets us to the maximum impervious coverage, which we went through. And the parking aisle width, we had testimony that it's safe and adequate for the parking lot and for this property. That is an issue with preserving the house, because you have the house, and then you have only so much, and we want to maintain the two-foot at the front landscaping, which goes back and creates a little bit deeper to three feet, but that, that creates a entrance of 22 feet where 24 feet are required. Again, it's safe and adequate, but it's two feet less than the requirement, and it's issue of saving the house, preserving the existing house.
So we're still going to have that very narrow slit between the edge of the parking drive and the property line?
There's, there's really nothing we can do about that, because it's the existing structure that kind of...
Because of the house, no, I understand that, okay. All right.
And then, then the other issues that are before the board, which, actually, we would really prefer, Mr. Chair, that you do decide if you're going to, to go through these, is the color and the stone. We've been, you know, we think, this is the board that has the jurisdiction, and HPC has made some comments. We showed some elevations with the different colors, but we really need some clarity. If you want the stone, we can put the stone, if you want the siding to go down, we'll put the siding. But HPC's backed up, and it would be a tremendous, you know, loss of six months, maybe even longer, even before we can get before them and resolve this, I'm pretty sure. So, and this board has jurisdiction, so we would prefer...
I understand that, Elizabeth, are you still there? Elizabeth?
Yes, I'm here.
Can they, can you get to them before six months?
Of course, yes. The only, we are booked in October, but after that, we do have openings.
Okay, all right. That, would that be satisfactory to you?
I, I mean, that's just how the board feels. Like I said, our preference would be to have it resolved, and, I mean, a lot of it, you know, like the color, to me, is very personal, and everybody's going to have different opinions. And when we were before HPC, to be honest, there was a lot of varying opinions, whereas Scrabbe was very clear that they liked it, and, you know, certain architectural elements. At historic, we were getting a lot of different people with different opinions, and if we're going to go back, I don't know. I, I, I just wanted to get it resolved.
Chris, to clarify, I don't think that there wasn't a, a difference in opinion when it came to the stone. I believe that they were all opposed to it. And as far as the color, I think that they also agreed, because it was in the memo. And the memo was drafted according to what they had stated at the meeting.
So, so Mr. Chair...
If you listen to the recording, that's not, that's not quite what, what was said at the, in the meeting. The memo and the, and the recording don't quite align.
But the, but the issue is that, that you can get before historic preservation within a, a month or two. So that shouldn't present a burden if we go in that direction.
Yeah, so...
Steve, I think we ought to make that decision. We can make that...
Say that again?
Why not make that decision if we're going to go ahead and approve this, and why can't we? I, I, I'm not stuck on putting the stone up the side of the house. I mean, the board feels like...
Look, whatever, whatever people, whatever people want to do on the board, that's fine.
It's our obligation, I think we ought to do it, not keep pushing it back.
I would just like to make a plug for HPC on that item, because they are there as the expertise on the historic district, on the preservation. And that's why they're there, to make their advisory comments, so I'm just putting a plug in for them for that.
Board members, the only other comment I wanted to offer is that, under the municipal land use law, you can certainly overrule HPC recommendations. We just need to explain in the resolution why you took that position. So if they have a recommendation on color, then the resolution would explain why you feel the blue is more appropriate, or, you know, whatever recommendations are not being followed, so...
All right. Does anybody want to venture into a resolution? Somebody want to take a stab at it? I'll gladly do it. If that's okay. I would recommend that we approve it with six units. And the, with a strong suggestion of a, of one of those being affordable, but if it's not possible, it's not possible. I would still like to see the seven cars, because I'm just concerned about parking in the area. And we'd have to go through the memos. We'll have to go through the recordings and Claudia's notes to go through each of these memos to make sure in the findings of fact that we have everything covered, because I can't even venture, you know, I made some notes, but I don't think I've got everything on all the memos. So we'd have to go through the findings of fact and try to get something that, that, that basically documents what was said this evening. And that would be my suggestion.
Steve, are you saying seven parking spaces and they would bank the other two?
Yes.
Okay. And then, do you want to...
But again, I'm six, six units, not seven.
Got it. And then in terms of the variances, they would no longer need the, well, so we'd be giving them a D5 variance for the density, but limited to a variance for 200-foot, square foot exceedance.
Plus or minus, right?
Plus or minus. They would still need the D1 variance for two buildings on one lot.
Right.
They would still need the rear yard setback. I have a question mark on that.
That's something that's, they need a rear yard setback for the deck unless others felt that the patio would be more appropriate.
Okay, do you, what, what do you want your motion to propose, deck or patio?
Just so we're, just so we're clear, we have one unit that has a patio now back there, and one unit that has a deck. So there, they, they were done that way to have two different heights, so that they end up creating different spaces for the two tenants.
So you'd still need, you'd still need the deck if you wanted to provide anything for the second floor unit?
No, we could, we could, no, 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 we, we can have stairs going down for both of them to patios.
Oh, I see.
Patios for both of them, but then they're going to be adjacent at the same level. We thought that it was nice from a tenant point of view to have them at different heights.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that. I think, I think that would be more attractive, rather than having people come down the steps to a patio.
All right, so then they need rear yard setback, 16...
Considering what's back there, it's not going to have any, I don't think it'll have any...
Yeah.
All right, so then they'll need rear yard setback, 16 feet plus or minus to the deck.
Yes.
The impervious coverage should not change, they'll still need that variance, correct? All right? They won't need parking stall size variance, that can be eliminated?
Oh, yes, with regard to the impervious coverage, with pervent, permeable paving, permeable paving needs to be maintained?
Yes.
So that's got to be, I mean, it may be, it may be permeable now, but after so many years of, you know, washing over it, okay.
If it gets vacuumed annually, I believe is what the requirement is, it, it keeps itself clear.
It's included in the stone owner management manual.
Yep.
Okay. All right, Karen, I'm sorry.
All right, so they don't need a variance for parking stall size, nor a variance for parking within the front yard setback?
Right.
The driveway setback...
Driveway width, right?
Yes.
Turning aisle.
Turning aisle. Yes. I believe the applicant had said they could increase it to five feet?
No, that, that, so the parking aisle width is, 24 is required, we're at 22. The side, the side yard setback is the one where it's either three or five feet for the back new building, and it's the measurement to the staircase, not the, the building itself. The building itself is 7.3 feet.
Yeah, I would go, I would go with the five feet.
Five, okay. And then they still need the driveway setback variance. They no longer need, as we said, they no longer need the variance for the number of units in the building, and they need one for the parking aisle width. So that's a lengthy way of amending your motion. And I think your point was well-taken, that it will be subject to conditions, and we will go through the testimony again to make sure that we have...
And what about the, the color and the stone?
Yeah.
I mean, I have, I have...
Can you take a vote on it, a strong vote?
Well, look, I mean...
Why don't you approve, why don't you, why don't you do two separate, two separate resolutions? You do one resolution where you approve the variances that you just talked about, and then you do another one, whether you want, whether you're going to vote on coloring stone, or whether you're going to push it to HPC.
I don't want to do two resolutions, but, but what, do any other board members have any feeling on the color? The, the colors and the stone?
I'm okay with, I like the blue, and I, I like the stone as well. I, I think I like the stone on the bottom better than all the way up, because I don't know what the cultured stone looks like if it was, and what it looks like, but I, I like the picture that is showing right now, I like, right?
Yeah, I agree with that, I agree with that.
Okay, and, and so you're, you're not necessarily in favor of letting the HPC decide?
I'm not opposed to it, I just, I'm just stating my opinion that I like the way that looks right there.
Okay. All right. Anybody else want to say anything about it?
I, I, Steve, I, I like the picture as it is. Yeah, it'd be nice to see the stone color if, if Josh had it, but I think, I think the blue color is fine. I, I think it's a big lot, so it's not, you know, as impactful being a color than if it was a, a, a small, condensed, really tight with other buildings, so...
I, I think the blue, and I think the, the slide that's presented looks pretty nice.
Yeah.
I just wanted to let HPC make that decision, but that's fine. If, if, if it's an issue and everybody feels it's acceptable, I would, I would, I would agree to it. Yeah, I know, right. So, so I would, I would then support the blue siding and the stone as shown on this slide, only at the lower level.
It's pace about seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, too.
All right, so, did I cover everything? Did we cover everything?
Uh, yes, yes.
A question about all the utilities from the new building in the back run close to that tree. I don't know if there's a way, if the applicant's willing to shift them away from that tree, because there's really no trees on the site anymore, except the pine tree, which probably isn't going to make it. And maybe have the arborist look at it and see if, what, what would be appropriate for that tree?
To protect it?
Yeah, because the utilities run out of the, for the existing house will remain, but there's new sanitary gas and electric to the back unit, and they seem close. Now, maybe that drawing's not accurate, but...
But the engineer did testify he would move those, but I think the arborist is a good idea. I think that makes sense, let him, let him look at it and make a recommendation.
Can't object to that.
Sounds good.